This is a little bit different than our formal Select Board meetings. It's really collaborative in nature, looking at our kind of strategic plan and early step here. So let me start with, just for all those who can't please rise for a pledge, and we'll start there. And Mr. Esco, will you raise the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And real call.
Dan Esco.
Here.
Tom Bishop.
Here.
Mark Stroud.
Here.
Tom Roger, Tom Richardson.
Here.
And Mr. Chris Jodick.
Here, thank you, awesome. All right, so again, tonight is going to be collaborative in nature, and we have a kind of a general structure on the agenda. But our goal here is to begin strategic conversations around what are we doing as a town? What's priorities? Well, where are the priorities? Where are we from our master plan to where are we today? And my thought is that our outcome is really not decisions tonight, but much more just structure and then probably, you know, not probably, but then continued conversations. Over the last few months, the board, through different meetings, we've had discussions about, hey, would it be nice if we kind of just take a step back, see where we are, and see where we're going? Any comments from board members on that? Is that anything ready?
Yeah, we're good, yep.
That's good, okay. So I guess we'll start, Tom, we'll just start with you kicking us off. And then for the folks in the audience, if you have any topics as we talk through things, raise your hand and I'll engage you in that conversation, and then we'll go from there. But let me, so let's just go ahead and start, and then we'll see where this takes us. We are going to time limit this, we're not going to be here all night. So we dedicated six to nine o'clock, is that correct? And if any board members need to step out for any reason, certainly feel free, and we'll go from there. So, Tom?
So we're covering three main topics, an update on the master plan, an update on just the state of operations of the town, and some projects, and potential projects. And then looking at a more open discussion about, okay, well, given that this is what our master plan said we should do, and what the current status of things is, what are some things that we might think about for medium and long term? So that's how we're thinking about this. And so the first part is really dedicated to a review of the master plan, and our town planner, Yanko Thomas, has been working on that. For anyone listening who's not here, I guess only Sabrina's on Zoom. But the master plan is available on our website under the Town Planner Department, so as are a number of other plans. So that said, Yanko, why don't you have your chair to the table with the mics? And then you can go over what you have produced.
Is everybody getting a chance to meet that new town planner?
Is the whole board here?
We just missed Mr. Boyle. Yeah, yeah. He's not available this evening, but, yep.
Which way should we like me to?
The beach face.
Should I face this way?
Yeah, put a chair there.
Yeah.
There, facing this way. Okay, yeah.
That's good. Yeah, there's a, there's kind of a brief introduction, and it might be good if you just went through that.
Sure.
And then, let's see, we've come up with first a list of the high priority action steps that were in the master plan, and Yanko will do a discussion with those. We also have included all of the action steps in the master plan as the final section in this document. I don't know whether we'll want or need to get into those, but they are available in case we want to refer to them. So I would say, unless anybody has any objections, just to help us all get on the same page here, Yanko, you could just read the introduction and review of the components, and then, you know, whatever questions come up, will come up, and then we can get right into. What the action steps were in 2017, what the high priority action steps were, and what has happened regarding some of those. Now, both Yanko and I are new here, so we may not actually have all the information for all of those action steps. But we've tried to at least look into them and give some kind of an update as to if anything has happened.
Thank you to the board for letting me be here, and welcome everyone. So the introduction to our town, Town of Dalton Master Plan. So during 2015, sorry, 2015 and 2016, the Town of Dalton developed a master plan, which was a strategic document that helps direct decision-making within the town for the next 10 to 20 years in order to achieve a desired vision for the community. This plan was developed by the Master Plan Steering Committee. This group was comprised of members of town boards, in particular the planning board, town staff, and interested citizens of Dalton. The production of the master plan falls under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81B. And this reads as, Section 81B, "A planning board established in any city or town under Section 81 shall make a master plan of such city or town, or such parts or parts thereof, as said board may deem advisable, and from time to time may extend or perfect such plan. Such plan shall be a statement through text, maps, illustrations, or other forms of communication that is designed to provide a basis for decision-making regarding the long-term physical development of the municipality. The comprehensive plan shall be internally consistent with its policies, forecasts, standards, and shall include the following elements. Number one, goals and town policy statement. Two, land use plan element. Three, housing element. Four, economic development element. Five, natural and cultural resources. Six, open space and recreation. Seven, services and facilities element. Eight, circulation element. And nine, implementation program. A master plan considers all aspects of a community to create a consistent strategy for how each aspect should progress in the future. It is a blueprint for the day-to-day actions as part of managing a town. It is important to note that a master plan is an advisory document, not a regulatory document. The purpose of this plan is to create an opportunity for the town to reflect and determine what it wants for its future, and then chart out the actions and personnel needed to achieve its vision. The strategy created by the master plan is used to progress towards the desired vision for the town of Dalton. This vision serves as the basis for the subsequent goals, objectives, and action steps. The Dalton Master Plan covers land use, housing, economy, natural and cultural resources, services, infrastructure in places facilities, transportation in places circulation, and open space and recreation as the last and final chapter. The review of components. So the Dalton Master Plan has 18 goals, 56 objectives, and 186 action steps, spread across eight categories or chapters. This, sorry, the chapter with the most goals was infrastructure, with four goals, 16 objectives, and 29 action steps, four of which were a high priority. The chapter with the most action steps was economy, with just two goals, but 39 action steps, eight of which were a high priority. In total, of the 186 action steps, 32 have been identified as high priority, 76 is medium priority, and 72 is low priority. Of these 32 high priority action steps, I have been able to identify seven as fully completed and seven as partially completed. Please note that this is only an initial assessment based on my recent appointment. The breakdown of complicated or in progress, sorry, the breakdown of completed or in progress high priority action steps is below. And that is the next section where we break those down.
This is very good opening, you know, just the numbers alone, the number of action steps and things of that nature that defined a number of years ago before your appointment. So we're going to start off with the economy.
So I'll just go through the, so with in progress, these are in progress or completed action steps. So with the economy, the goal number one is to improve the local economy. Within this, we have objective of promoting the town for new service-oriented businesses whose restaurant, trade services, financial, retail, general, and personal services, professional services, grocery. Action step for this was to promote downtown events and festivals, such as performances, and artists to get residents and visitors into retail establishments. Suggested leadership for this was the Grow Dalton Committee, and the status of this is completed. However, it is a continuous task in action. And some examples of this, just from my short tenure here, Dalton Day, CRA, the Dalton Carnival, and the climate, sorry, the CRA 100th, the Dalton Carnival, and the climate forums, and a stationary factory. That all happened within three, last three months, I believe. The next objective is to promote, to increase tourism and recreation. And the action step for this is to become designated as Appalachian Trail Community. Suggested leadership is Grow Dalton and the Select Board.
That was, that is all done.
That one is all done, correct, that is completed, because it is designated as Appalachian Trail Community, based on the website, so that is completed. So, second goal, improve the financial well-being residents of Dalton. The objective being to support the education of residents. And the action step is to support the CB-RSD in its renovation of schools in Dalton in order to provide the facilities to support the highest quality education while balancing the need of the town for other services. The suggested leadership was the CB-RSD, the Central Berkshire Regional School District. And given the construction of the Wacoona Regional High School, I have listed that as completed as an action step. The next one, project 2.3, to promote the quality of life in Dalton. Develop a marketing campaign to promote Dalton as a good place to raise a family. Suggested leadership for this was Grow Dalton, and the status I was able to identify is in progress. We have a Welcome to Dalton video, but I'm sure that there could be more advertising and other methods of promoting the town in the future. But it is definitely an action step that is in progress. And we move on to infrastructure. So with the first goal being to maintain and improve the buildings in town, two objectives under this. First objective is to improve the town hall, upgrade the internet capabilities. Suggested leadership, town manager, and this has been completed. Resolve the old Dalton High School building issue is the next objective. To develop a workable plan to dispose of the old Dalton High School. Suggested leadership, Select Board, new school has been built, so status complete. Then we move on to housing, and when chapters are missing, that means within those chapters there was no completed action steps identified.
Just for the folks in the audience and folks at home, you kind of have this structured as a general update of things that were complete or in progress, and then the next section is a high priority action steps and things of that nature. So very detailed.
Correct.
A lot of detail in here, okay.
I do have that written as complete.
The improvement described.
Yes, for the upgrading of the internet capabilities. But for the total improvement of the whole building, I can see, yes. Okay, yes, thank you. So then we move on to Chapter Six, which is housing. And our goal is to address the local housing needs with an objective to ensure that zoning supports a variety of housing options. Action step is to review the zoning bylaws to ensure that they allow for a development of a range of housing, including middle-income housing, first-time homeowners, and family and senior housing. Suggested leader was a planning board, and the status of this is in progress as our zoning bylaws allow for the development, but it can be difficult due to need for special permits. However, we did pass an ADU bylaw within our zoning bylaws. So that's just something that is moving forward.
If anybody has a question, we're going, as we're going through, just raise your hand, and I'll certainly call them.
Then we move on to Chapter Seven, which is, first goal is to provide a complete and well-maintained system of roads, with an objective to work to improve conditions and the safety of existing infrastructure. The action step being repair or replace the high bridge over the Husatonic River on Husatonic Street by South Carson Avenue. Suggested leadership is the Traffic Commission, and status is in progress. This is actually part of our municipal vulnerability plan.
And the other thing on the roads, this would be for, again, before your time to work to improve the conditions and safety of existing infrastructure, and I'm sure it's here. We completed the street scan program. Yep. So it kind of lists all the road conditions throughout town and things of that nature, green, yellow, red, majority of it's red, as far as needs, needs attention, right, so.
Is that map available somewhere, on the show website?
I'm not sure if we posted the map itself, but the roads.
It's not posted.
Can you?
Yeah.
Do you have some kind of GIs as well? What do you have?
It's on their website.
It's their software.
Can there be a link to their website?
Not for an access, I wonder if we can print down a PDF though?
That's what I'm asking.
A screenshot.
Yeah, screenshots or PDFs.
Something.
Maybe, okay.
Is it time to mention Gulf Road as an emergency exit out of town?
Actually, great comment. The, I think what you'll see in the Emergency Management Plan is the way that they structured that. With Gulf Road not being maintained by the other towns, it's very challenging for us to use as a.
And not being open year-round.
Yeah, and not being open year-round. So, but when you see the, we just reviewed the Emergency Management Plan last board meeting, and in that document, you'll see how that group has the flow of traffic going from the different sections of town.
Specifically for evacuation.
And specifically for evacuation, yep.
I'm assuming there'll be a more chance to talk about that.
Yep, yep, for sure.
I'll also add that a number of roads, you know, have been improved upon since, because it's ongoing work. Dalton Division Road, obviously, there was the paving that was recently completed, but there is the full reconstruction of the road that is also being planned and engineered. Engineering plans being done currently, and we, you know, we're on the list for the state funding for that. So that's an in-process action item that's part of this transportation objective as well.
And after that objective, we have a plan for and address future transportation needs, with the action step being, as existing culvers and bridges need replacement to ensure that the replacement components are adequate and are able to accommodate extreme weather events. Suggested leadership is the Highway Department, and status is in progress. This is also part of the municipal vulnerability plan. There are grants that have been applied for, and we are reading on a response slash the awarding of the grant to get funding.
Is this where the Walker Brook falls under? No, no, this is transportation.
I don't believe so, no.
What does that fall under?
Yeah, well, it's, it's not exactly a culvert.
No.
It's a buried river.
Yeah.
Buried rock. But that's certainly in progress.
On Chapter Eight, we cover land use, with goal number two there being to preserve and support agricultural uses. Developing incentives to support the physical soundness of area farms is the objective. And the action step is to allow development of alternative energy sources to produce energy for the farm to reduce operations costs. Suggested leadership has been on the planning board. We have a status of completed with the Warren Farms Project, as well as solar bylaws within the community bylaws.
I'm sorry. Okay, the Warren Farms Project is not agricultural. What, I'm sorry, what did you say that Warren Farms, what was the other one?
Solar bylaws.
Okay, but that's not about supporting agriculture, right?
I think there's definitely a lot of overlap in terms of the objectives. You know, that the solar, the development of solar in Dalton can certainly fall under some other areas as well, but it's not directly related to agriculture necessarily.
Like at all, Warren Farms? It says farm in the name, but it's not Warren Farms.
Yeah, yeah.
Warren Farms is not a farm.
No, yeah, of course not, no, it's a solar field, no.
It's a solar field.
Yeah.
It's an economic project.
If any.
The intent might have been something for, you know, sometimes they put solar panels up high to try to raise your livestock, and maybe some.
Agree.
I think this is more of a land use issue.
Yeah.
Because it falls under land use, but I agree with the objective, this makes it a little confusing.
The goal is in what the achievement was, first set, that's all. Yeah, I mean, if we want to support farms, we work to do that, that wasn't it.
True. Great, great.
Two more.
Great call.
Yeah, so Chapter Ten, Open Space and Recreation. Goal number one being to preserve land for open space and recreational needs. Objective under that is to promote the Appalachian Trail, become a designated trail community. We have done this already, so it's an overlap with the previous objective, status is complete. To improve signage around town for locating the trail and promoting local resources for hikers. The suggested leadership would be the Parks Commission. Status is in progress, there is really limited signage for hikers around town. There might be identifications for trailheads and things like that, but in walking around the town, there isn't as much, you know, there's limited signage for this. And that is where we finish our in-progress or completed action steps section.
I'll add to that, you know, that we, as a town, developed the Open Space and Recreation Plan. That was kind of the precursor to being able to further develop open space and recreation opportunities in the town and apply for various grants, state and federal. It's required to have one of those plans in order to be eligible for these types of grants. And the Open Space and Recreation Committee was formed as a result of this as well. And their first project has been an improvement in the Pines area for hiking, signage, and promoting that resource in town.
Is that the area that's back over?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Actually, we've gotten on a committee, and we got a Mass Trails Grant for about $60,000, and we're going to be making the main trail next summer an accessible, sorry, up. You know, the main quarter accessible. So the teenagers is going to be doing it, we're doing a partnership with them, and hopefully kids from Wacoona High School will have an opportunity for summer jock, I'll look on that.
Excellent. Excellent. Okay, would you like me to move on to the next chapter or discussion?
Okay, the next chapter is going to be the high priority, but as we're kind of doing this, let me just pause for the audience, what would you like to hear, if one or two topics, as we kind of go through this?
If there's a plan for the roads and they're all red and whatever, there's going to be some kind, some people have to say, look, Orchard Road is on, is on our list, this is what we're doing. Instead of us, my person, myself, every time I see somebody, Orchard Road, Orchard Road, the road is, it's tearing, it's falling apart, it's almost impassable, it is.
Yeah.
And they came and put a very nice double strip down there, so it looks like highway, so people can go faster on it, instead of the speed bump that we've been asking for for 20 years. Can somebody, help somebody to say, this is what's going to happen next year, this is the plan for 2025, this is the plan for 2026. So we don't have to keep asking you guys what to do. We just know, okay, that it's going to happen in two years, and I'll shut it.
Yeah, and just say, just to back up a little bit, all good, great comments. What we're doing now is just reviewing what the priorities were when the master plan was written to see whether or not there's still something that we want to move forward with. So that's why we took the high priority ones, because it seemed like those are the most likely to be the ones that we would want to.
Yeah, it makes you sure that a high priority is still a high priority, all right, kind of in the conversation, yeah.
And just, could somebody put something on the website to say, well, here's the priorities, and this is what makes that, these roads are going to be.
Yeah, I think what your comment ties to the master plan is improve communication to the residents, I think is one of the objectives we have in the master plan. So to that, as we look at what our road strategy is, maybe we, you know, talk through about publishing something as we kind of move forward, but, yeah.
And as far as the master plan goes, it is a planning board document. So what the Select Board is doing is trying to, you know, try to take a big picture and say, is this current document working for us? And, you know, some towns have their, have their master plan work for them for 20 years until they decide, you know, it's fine, we redid this. And other towns try to do it every five years, or seven years, or 10 years. So it's something where, you know, we're just, it's been since 2017. So we're just starting to say, well, how's it working out so far? So this is part of the, where are we now, sort of review of things that we are trying to use to set up the discussion for, well, that's where we were, but here's where we want to go. And that, so there's the master plan part of it, and then there's the operations part of it. Of course, I'll be introducing that during we finish this master plan.
So, Yanko, and you're, you joined us in, I'm going to get it completely wrong. It feels like you've been here since last April, but we know it's not that long.
I joined you on July 10th.
July 10th.
July 10th.
So from July 10th to sitting here in October, you kind of dusted off the master plan and look at it. What do you think is possibly missing, or if anything's missing? What could be most helpful to you as a town planner as we look at this? Because it, I don't know what other board members think, but when I look at the master plan from '16, I think it was very, very well done, very.
I agree.
A lot to it, to your open comments of 186 action steps. But do you see any major gaps or flaws or things that need to be clarified?
In terms of, I don't, I feel like there isn't anything too specific that comes to mind to add to this. You guys did an excellent job covering everything legally covered, and it goes really in-depth here. It's a wonderful document. The only issues I found was with some, I guess there was some overlap between action steps, and some of the action steps were very vague, so it was kind of hard to set metrics for how we're going to define success of these action steps and completion. And so maybe set, finding a way to do that, and as well as putting in potentially cost estimates in these things, so we can kind of have a sense of, here's how we're going to measure the success, and here is how much it's going to cost to have us, you know, achieve the success we want to achieve. I feel like that might be, just at a quick glance, is the only, I think, major thing that I could think of in here, but otherwise, this is very in-depth, especially in the back it goes in leadership, participants, schedule. So like, we have, while we have a schedule, you know, we don't have the cost. Like, how much would it cost, five-plus years, you know, one to three years? So I guess reducing the amount of vague, vague terms, objectives, and metrics within the master plan, I think would be the, my personal recommendation of it.
Any comments from the board?
Well, what are we, eight years, eight and a half years in? When did we adopt the master plan? Was it in 2016?
I believe so, 2016, yes.
All right, so seven, seven and a half years in.
Yeah, 2016.
Certainly, much has been done, but there's a lot more work to do. That's what jumps out at me. And I think more regular consultation and monitor, you know, consultation of the master plan amongst the town boards. Obviously, we're doing this now, which maybe should have been happening all along. But, you know, we have a lot more work to do. I think that's what it is, is we have more work to do. It's very obvious, but.
And is 180 action steps a realistic?
It's a big elephant.
Oh, because, because maybe we would be better served with fewer, more targeted action steps that we could actually get done.
Yeah. And Yanko, to you.
Yanko.
It's Yanko, right?
Yanko.
Yanko, okay, Dave, okay, thank you. Yanko, I like your comment about the cost, because that's why I've struggled. Is to say, okay, where do we make the investment, where do we make the bet, right? Or where do we put the dollars? And where is it against our current debt for the town, and what does that look like? Right, before we all just kind of pass, yeah, this one looks like a good idea, this one looks like a good idea, this one looks like a good idea, then we're $5 million in.
Exactly. Where do we get the money from?
We don't have $5 million.
Exactly.
Right, so then where do you go from there? I think that's a delicate dance that we have to kind of go through.
So the follow-up to that, can we put these 300 things you want to do and say, well, this isn't mobile? As a town, we don't have the money, and all these, attach money to these, it seems like the sidewalks or whatever. 188, maybe as well, so, I think, well, get a plan from whoever to say, well, this is, how many people is going to take, and you can tell, there are standards for how long sidewalks, how long sidewalks last, and how they have to be maintained. So somebody needs to put, I think, or say, look, if we're going to have perfect sidewalks, it's going to cost $1 million a year, and it's going to be 35 people on the crew. Can we afford to do that? No, well, then, this is what we can do with the sidewalks. Stop complaining about that, stop complaining about it, because this is, if you guys, you know, push the plan, do that, do that, do that. If you guys, you know, push the plan, do that, do that, do that, say, we're going to filter, say, look, you know, these are 10 things. We're going to, we're going to focus on stop warning, that, we can also be open to funding.
Right.
And just stop the Chinese going on, you know, you start to go on doing it, and things that you don't want to do. Just not to that, you know, that.
And I agree with you, David, because I think we feel, I think that we feel like we do that in our meetings, but it's not public, right?
Right.
And I agree with what you're saying. We do with what we have, and we feel like we're doing that and trying to allocate our funds the smart way, but we need to make it more public. I agree with you on that. So people know, like, this is what we got.
So you're definitely, you're only, you're only, this is what we have, because the sidewalks is all crap. You know, this is a, this is what we need, this is what we have, this is what we're going to invest, we can do.
Right.
We should stop warning.
Thank you. Recognize Cheryl?
Thanks, Josh. First, I just want to thank you guys for having this session and opening up the line, and having a conversation. And thank you for, you know, your service to the town, and you're learning this to do so. I wanted to point out a gap, and it's great that you've all segued perfectly into what I wanted to say, what I thought was a big gap in the master plan, and something we've talked about with some people before, which is communication in this town. You know, we're really behind in terms of, like, what I know about, like Windsor, Otis, I've got friends, they have newsletters. They cut people, you know, the town, there's more communication. And I think at the very least, we should have a listserv, we should have a way to use the, I just got a text today about an emergency service, like Do Something, where we can text people when something's happening. I think, you know, we have a very top-down kind of structure in our town about the way things happen. That's how it feels to us, our town. And I feel that just the general culture of the town would benefit by people feeling more informed. People, they would, you know, more, people might step up more if they felt more that they could engage more and be respected for, you know, their role and what they bring to the table and that sort of thing. And I feel like more of a built community, you know, for many years, I lived in Pittsfield, and I heard about Dalton. And, you know, it was a very tight community, but, you know, people have moved on, many people have moved in, us included, although I've lived here now 16 years, but, you know, treated sometimes like, I would live there, but.
I don't tell you, but I'm originally from Boston area, right?
So just the idea of building community, and part, a big part is communication. And having people feel like they're a part of things, you know, I care about the master plan. And it's interesting, because Janko is reading it off, and I'm hearing something, and I'm going, yeah, well, the select board might have been the ones who are suggested, actually, they're not going to do that. There was an application for the, they're the ones who did that. And wouldn't it be nice to think I've read it for, having done that? Not, it's just like, suggested, either was that person, just different things like that. So I think communication, having a listserv, you know, text. Our website could be way better, like, in terms of pulling, letting people have information about using the transfer station. You know, just the video, just a lot of things I could think about our website. You know, my background's in GIS, so I care about David's asking. I'm like, you know, can we get that data, and a person can click on it and see what's related with their road? And all that information can be made available to people, so they know about their road or whatever. I'm just, I just feel like communication should be something that's part of our master plan, to have a better network of communication in our town.
Yeah, no, great. Thank you for the comments. And just for the group on the communication, one of the strategies that we do have is we are going to redo our website. And we're in the middle of looking at contracts, we have a small little group together, actually, a group of three, myself, Tom, and another individual, looking at, to like an RFP, a request for, like, okay, what services can a particular company provide? We haven't gone to the design yet. Then we need to get a group together, go, okay, what's the design of that website? What are the pieces and parts of it, whether it's email, blast, through that? I prefer, let's say, I prefer a newsletter, I'll get that in paper form. You might prefer email, David may prefer text, you know, so what's the.
It's cheaper to do it digitally.
It is.
But there are people who want that paper and don't.
It is, right, so.
We're going to get there eventually, everybody's digital, but now.
Right, so how do we, how do we, how do we go through with each one of those channels? So we're starting that process, and that was a vote in town meeting last year. Well, not last year, it was past town meeting about making the investment, right? I think it was a town meeting, to make the investment and to help with that strategy, for sure, to a point.
Because even, I'm just reflecting on the creation of the master plan. And Janko said, you know, with town people's input, I'm thinking, you know, like, where I'm going to go down, like, town people. I mean, it's not, you know, we need better communication if we really want people to do it.
Yeah, yeah, that's a process, but sure, yeah.
Actually, the people, it was right in this room here. There was all of the different objectives in the town master plan, and townsfolk were invited to come in and rate the priority level of each item. So it was a very democratic process, and there was a good, good attendance that night. This was before COVID, so back in 2015, I was here. And, I don't know, at least 50 people, which is not bad for, you know, one of these meetings.
Sure, but on a scale of the town, Dan, you know.
Well, here's the thing, you know, the information could be communicated with, in more venues or in better ways, potentially, but a lot of people just don't show up either. And, you know, I don't want to say that that's just the way things are or always have to be. But, you know, I don't disagree, we could communicate more effectively and hopefully improve engagement as well. It can't hurt, right?
Yeah, it can help.
And then, just on that point alone, if you look at the, under the high priority action steps, under, you know, boy, I just lost my place, sorry about that, services, I think, yeah. It, you know, objective one, two, is educate the voters, improve education of the voters on the budget and the long-term just impact of decisions, right? So how do we, you know, this is part of that process, and so it's part of our overall master plan. Share services among municipalities and districts. And we tried that with Hinsdale, with our police department, to begin that exercise, right? We learned a lot about blending the cultures of two towns in that kind of approach, and things of that nature. But we're not going to stop because of that experience. What are the other opportunities, right, and things of that nature?
Actually, we have an action item here, Cheryl. Develop an electronic town newsletter to better educate the residents. It's a goal, just has not been done. So we can, and it's a high priority, it is, should be at the top.
Fundamental things that affects a lot of other things.
What's the low-hanging fruit, right?
That's low-hanging.
That's low-hanging fruit.
Once you have that infrastructure.
Yeah.
Put that at the top of it.
So it's internships.
I'd love to know about the, I'd love to know about the wins and the, like, if we get a grant, everybody should know it. If we've got big challenges, everybody should know. Like, people will feel more invested, like, it's our town, and we are pulling together and make things happen, or deal with challenges. You know, it's just, for so many people, they have no idea what's going on, so, yeah, they don't even.
It sounds like between, David, your comment and Cheryl, your communication bubble is bulging up, right?
I'd also.
It shows that there will be a lot less, there's going to be a lot less whining and complaining about stuff that people need. You guys, what do you work, what do you do? What the hell do they do? They won't leave when they go on TV for an hour.
An hour? We've been on these for three.
I was going to say.
How many hours?
Yeah.
And they fight with each other, and they don't do anything.
Thanks, David.
They got that grant, so it's going to be easier.
Yeah. Thank you, David.
So I just wanted to point out, because what Cheryl's saying is, she's bringing up a good point. And within, I know this is towards the back, but you were mentioning how, you know, the community was. There was a forum that you guys held, and they did talk about this. So I can briefly read it, just to give you an idea. So the planning process at a glance, a public opinion survey was developed early in the process to serve as available online throughout July 2015, and received a total of 243 responses. Public forum was held in Senior Center May 18th, 2016, my birthday. Representatives of several stakeholder groups and town staff and board members were interviewed together for the master plan, gathered data for the master plan, MPSC meeting. The results from this public forum prioritization activity, the economy, 154 dots and 40 actions. Infrastructure, 118 dots and 29 actions. Housing, 40 dots and 13 actions. Transportation, 95 dots and 25 actions. Land use, 36 dots and eight actions. Cultural and cul, natural and cultural resources, 71 dots and 20 actions. Open space and recreation, 101 dots and 33 actions. But that's just, just the summary of what was in the, in the master plan.
That's pretty comprehensive.
Eyes are in the back of my head, I've been up. Have you seen that?
Yeah, it's hard to, it's hard to visualize, I agree with.
I'm absorbing what you're saying.
For this, yeah.
And Tom, we'll post this on our website, right?
Sure.
Okay, because I think it's very comprehensively done, so.
Yeah.
You can make one or two tweaks first.
Sure.
Yep, yep, a couple corrections. But, yeah, it was definitely a great engaged process. And I think just back to the communication, though, there is a goal or an action item in here to, to a town newsletter, as an example. It does take resources, staff, to do these things. But we can talk about that in our planning, to make that a priority. I don't disagree, I think communication should be at the top.
I, I would also, as I'm flipping through this, there are things that are catching my eyes as a select, as a, as a member of the select board. And this is kind of where I think it started our conversations a few months back of where we, where the select board kind of fit in, looking at strategy, looking at these pieces. And as one under here, I think it's under the high priority section. Make sure I'm talking about the right section, Janko, before I, yeah, it's under high priority. And if I go to section, chapter nine, it says national and cultural resources. And goal one says preserve and protect historic and cultural assets. Objective one, one, preserve, protect, and promote the history of Dalton. And underneath that says, develop tax incentive for buying and improving older homes. Suggested leadership, select board. We haven't had a conversation around that, but it's part of our master plan. And so should we brush this up and say, okay, what parts, like every committee, is it really on our agenda? We focus on these particular action steps or not? And then I ask myself the second question, what does that really mean?
Exactly, yes.
What is that? Somebody put a little dot on, on a chart that says, this is important. But what was that story about that little dot in that chart that says we should create tax incentives for older homes to keep the history of Dalton? I mean, we, we invest in the historic district, and I think we use some ARPA dollars underneath that to create districts, but not incentives to keep the older homes. And, you know, I think there's a, I don't know, just kind of caught my eye.
There's also.
And there is one, one practical step that the town could take is, if it established a fund, there's a gap for houses that are older and in need of work. They can get rehabilitation grants through ERPC, because we're part of a community development block grant consortium. And Dalton residents have taken advantage of that, do take advantage of that. But where the federal program rules fall is sometimes a little bit beyond what people can do. For example, if you need some work done in your house, you might have to let it first, which is another expensive process that does not have any support. So there is a gap. And I've suggested to the state, the state fund statewide, because maintaining our housing stock is obviously key to our affordable housing as well. So there is a gap there. And we could have a fund that, if somebody would qualify to the CFP, but they need some of the work done first, then they could apply for that.
It's, it's interesting, we perhaps should put on, you know, kind of go through this and look at agenda items on this.
Joe, is the map of the historic districts on the website? Do I have a vote?
I don't, I don't know.
What districts are?
I have to defer to Tom. I don't know for sure.
I don't know.
So I would see that there, and what the definition of historic district means, so.
I think there's some content, I don't know, I don't know what all the content is that we have up there.
That's a winner we could add to the assessors map.
And an explanation, you know, people probably live in an historic district, don't even know it, and may not know the rules of what it means.
That's a fair point.
Cheryl, have you seen on our website the assessors map?
Yeah.
We can add layers to that. We have to pay them. I think we get maybe some layers for free each year, depending. But you can certainly work with Yanko, because I've asked him to think of layers that we might want to add to that as well, to make it more useful to residents than just for assessing purposes. So go and answer that one.
But we don't have to reinvent the wheel there on the website. There are, there are towns, we've got Finsdale, we've got Conacore, we've got, and.
Oh, yeah, no, we're doing it good.
Lots of money, but there are towns that are just, you want to bang, oh, Joe, with this stuff, you know, you don't have to reinvent the wheel on this stuff.
Bernard Glenn, your seats or your roles, anything that you see missing, or just as we're kind of having this discussion, I want to make sure you guys have.
No, I mean, it's all, I haven't really looked a lot at the master plan myself since I've been back.
Yeah. You're too busy looking at this.
For sure. But it's something I should get more involved in, look at what there was. Yanko sent me a couple of things, he had questions on, so I did look up a couple of things, you know, a couple of action steps he was looking for.
Yeah.
There's some streets, like, one of the action steps is, what, you know, try to boost up Jack 90, like. So make sure all the streets that are accepted are, you know, we're getting paid for.
Getting credit for, yeah, yeah.
And I can go on to the state's website, and I can see a couple of streets that I know are accepted, but it's not on there. So that was something that was never done, but I did notice that. I hadn't gone through the whole list.
It was a great catch, though.
It was pretty, just one, you know, just a couple newer streets that I knew, and I clicked on, and said, you know, one of the ones is a town position. Now I got to find out what I was going to do with that. I don't know if that's come back to you, who to do something, I'm going to, I'll talk to state.
Okay. Glenn?
I'm kind of the same position, but I have not gone through the master plan in depth, and I'm scared of it. You know, and that's basically just because my position, with the timing of everything, and publicity, it is, you know, moving, trying to at least get caught up with the different things. You know, to sit down and start working on the master plan, but then getting hit with the, you know, the mitigation plan. So, and the timeline that's now been put on that by the state in order to maintain the grant, which we've been, you know, working on and working on all these days. So, but there's a lot to be done moving forward, you know, from emergency management. I had a discussion with a couple of people with Mina about that today, just how it's ramping up and not only with the plans, the mitigation plan, the vulnerability plan, you know, getting the evacuation plan up and running and all that stuff. But there's, there's other things that are going on with it, too, so. For example, we, you know, utilizing the senior center more, we talked about that at the last meeting, utilizing the senior centers, the OC. And now my next step here would be find funding to convert the electrical system over to, you know, we have generators at the sheriff's department. We can use portable generators. So the first step would be, let's, you know, put this out and get an electrician in here to wire up the senior center, so we can plug in a portable generator. To have it as a warm shelter, a cool shelter, having it as a, a EOC, utilize that. And then trying to find funding to get the grant or funding to put a generator here, a permanent generator. Of course, in order to do that, we have to look at the train engine, but even Walker Road, so it all happens in.
Yeah. And we still, and those are very good points, Tom, is we look at the remaining ARPA dollars, where could we possibly apply some of these? And this goes back to your point, Janko, is what's the cost and what's the prioritization of that. Mark, what do you think?
Good.
Good, keep going. Cheryl?
When it comes to the Gulf Road question, I know you said the Mainz Road and Pittsfield. Have you talked to them at all about that, as far as it's an emergency area of town? And like, has the state, you know, for the state potentially helped with negotiating something?
When we look at the updated emergency management plan, just my opinion, board members can add their own, Glenn can certainly comment, is that that Gulf Road's not an exit, because we don't have the ability to maintain that. We, we, when we look at the exit plan and the way that the traffic would flow out of town, where they go towards Pittsfield, down, you know, down South Street, or up towards Windsor, or up towards Hinsdale, there's enough exits, because what the emergency management team, and I'm kind of going based upon what I was educated at the last board meeting, is when we had the, the students at the stationary factory for the fire at Craneville, a lot of traffic in Pittsfield Fire were coming down that way. And going up Gulf will cause congestion in that spot and lock things up. So it's really not a. So it's really not a exit, it's really not a good exit strategy for us to evacuate the town. You get all these other directions to go, and on this, in this plan, you'll see every single street has a direction to go to evacuate.
So my question, and you might, you obviously look at this a lot more, and I don't know the details of it, but my concern, that I made up in my head, is that if there was some kind of need to get to the hospital, and there was an accident on South Street, and that option, tuning is blocked, getting to the hospital would be more complicated, much more complicated to go through Hinsdale. More longer.
Yeah, depends upon the, to your point, I think it depends upon the situation, right?
I agree with that.
Yeah, it depends, yeah, it depends upon the situation, I'm not, it doesn't get to that.
The hospitals, it is, so getting to.
Right, right, so if you're, if you've got a major wreck, so how do you kind of go around it? So I don't think it gets that to, I don't know, Glenn, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think it goes to that specific level, it goes from evacuation, but not if there's.
So the plan itself, the evacuation plan is based on, you know, some sort of major, man-made or natural disaster, where we need to evacuate a large portion of all of the town. Individual stuff like, you know, we have the, I'm thinking the name of the road that cuts through, train paper, that we just.
Oh, yeah.
So if we have major, say on South Street, say we have a, we have to shut down the South Street intersection, we can divert traffic down around to the bridge and down South Street, you know, so that those temporary little areas, we have a little plugged up area, and we do have, you know, an alternate plan that we can go. The problem is that, you know, yeah, and yes, I don't necessarily send people down that little side street on a normal basis, obviously, we have gated issue of nails. It'll be the same as Gulf Road, the problem is that I can't, in good conscience, I can't put Gulf Road out there because it's so narrow, there's limited view, very limited view, when you look over the rocks, there's, it's very narrow. And if we were to tell people to start, you know, in mass, or try and send large groups down there, we're going to get a natural bottom, you know, we have to pour it into Lanesboro.
And it's closed seven months of the year.
Yeah, and it's closed, so.
Well, I'm talking about upgrading it, so it's not closed. It's not closed for any particular reason, except the condition of the road, it's terrible.
I think to upgrade it to a passable road, they could.
Well, it would take, quite frankly, it would take one to have Pittsville care, and they don't. And I don't mean to sound, I don't mean to sound, you know, we've had conversations with them, and where they have, there's no stake in it for them. To put a large amount of money into that for a road that doesn't go anywhere for them, they're worried about, you know, North Street, or their major, you know, revitalization project, so when we approach them, and we have talked to them, and then to devote to, say, the two, three, and I'm shooting in the dark, but just devote $200,000 to widen the road, blow the rocks out, level it off, try and make it at least two lane passable, they're going to say, there's no stake in it for us. Sorry, it's between Lanesboro and Dalton, and we need that money to go to close to the intersection, where we have to get our own problems, or this or that, so I think it's just, unfortunately, I mean, it's just, like you said, we've been, correct me if I'm wrong.
We have to escalate the Beaver issue up to the mayor to get some response.
Right, there is a permit, but that work is supposed to be done by the first of the year.
Okay.
The permit they have, has to be done, but it wasn't open until August 1st. I talked to them a few weeks ago, and there's, they're in the same issue, they're short-staffed and moving over and around, but they promised they were going to get there.
Yeah.
I said at this point, we're going to be closing in a month anyways, just.
Yeah, and the board just approved the emergency management plan that was provided to us last meeting, so there's a nice document that kind of structures that, but Gulf Road's not fired up for all sorts of reasons, which we're kind of going through on a buck.
Yeah, Gulf Road's designated senior road, so you're not going to be able to approve that without going through an act of Congress here.
Well, I mean, has anybody processed, I mean, are we talking about emergency?
No, there's a way out of town, too, there's one, you can go through Ashlot Park, there's a road connecting from South.
There is a road.
Yeah.
I'm unaware.
It's Pioneer, yeah.
And then it goes from Ash, it goes from South Street, goes through Ashlot Park, and connects over to.
We've got to get past the, where there was going to be a road, like, can I get there? I have to get to York.
Yeah, well, it depends on where the accident, you can't.
What, I'm talking about that, an accident in that spot.
Well, anybody below that can get out that way.
Do the people in town know what their evacuation plans are?
It's coming out, it's coming out.
No idea what to do.
David, it was just approved last meeting.
Okay.
So it hasn't.
How would they communicate? How would they present? My section of the website, my, the town website under.
Under emergency management, so it's out there, it's posted, yeah.
Send plan, the call plan, and the evacuation plan.
That might be a good thing to put on a code red, or now, notification.
Yeah, notification.
Maybe put a link on the front.
You know there's roads in national.
I just want to do a quick time check here, Tom, we're at ten past seven.
Hey, just real quick, they located that girl that was missing over in New York State, alive.
Oh, good, oh, excellent, excellent.
Yeah, we had originally dedicated an hour to the segment regarding the master plan. One thing I think it might be useful to do is to look at some of the high priority action steps.
Yeah, where the overlap is with this conversation.
That have not been completed, and, because that's really where, you know, we might, this first part was supposed to be more of us pat on the back and saying, okay, we've done some stuff.
Yeah, the pat on the back's feeling good.
And maybe you want to just choose some chapters to talk about, but I would definitely include infrastructure, because that's a big one.
And you don't have to verbally read every word, you can just kind of give us a summary, what do you think, kind of hit highlight or whatever, you know.
It's pretty concise.
I can do the high priority.
Oh, great.
I can just crank through it, yeah, the last section's the overall doc to this, this part, fishing goals action, that's the whole summary of that, you have everything in there, that's where the hall, 186 are, but we're going to do, we'll do chapter two instead.
Let's run through it.
Yeah, let's run through it, all right.
So if you did, if you did, oh, which chapter did?
Uh, page nine, high priority action steps.
Well, we're.
We're summarizing all the high priority action steps. We just did the completed once before.
Okay, you want to go through all the chapters, or?
Just quickly go through.
I sense some concern about time, but.
No, I just want to, just, whatever's easy for you.
No, I can, I can go through, if that's, if that's what you got, I'll go through it, and everyone gets the information, all right.
It's five pages.
Yep.
I just want to make sure we do infrastructure.
So maybe for comments, just mark it, and then do it at the end, so we just get through it all?
Yep.
And 10,002.
Okay, so, we're starting high priority action steps, these are all ones identified, high priority. Chapter three, the economy, goals to improve the local economy, objective, retain and encourage growth of Dalton's existing businesses. The action steps, survey local businesses to see what the town can do to encourage them to stay and grow in Dalton, suggest a leadership development and industrial commission. Objective, promote the town for new service-oriented businesses, restaurants, trade services, financial, retail, general, personal, professional services, grocery, promote town downtown events as festivals, performances, and artists to get leaderships to visit retailers, establishments, suggest a leadership grow Dalton. As you can see, this was mentioned before, so it's one of the completed. Next objective, maintain farming and agriculture, reach out to local farmers to see what the town can do to encourage their continued farming activities in Dalton, suggest a leadership farm and forestry commission.
Do we have a farm and forestry commission? Yes, we're supposed to.
We theoretically do, I.
Is it active?
There's never been any activity since I've been here, and I don't think there was for some time before I got here.
I don't think they've met.
Okay, interesting, okay.
Increase tour, I'm sorry, increase tourism and recreation, become designated as an Appalachian Trail community, suggest a leadership grow Dalton Select Board. Goal two.
Already happened.
Yep. Improve the financial well-being of the residents within Dalton. Objective, support the development of high-tech companies, review the Dalton zoning bylaws to ensure they allow high-tech companies to relocate in Dalton's commercial and industrial zones by right, suggest a leadership as the planning board. Support the education of residents, support the CBRSD and its renovation of schools in Dalton in order to provide the facilities to support the highest quality education while balancing the needs of the town for other services.
I think there was one you identified as vague.
It was, yes. And before the maintain farming and agriculture, I would also identify that one as vague, to reaching out to local farmers, where question and metrics would come into play. For continuing, support, another vague one, support and promote educational activities through Dalton Public Library, suggest a leadership Central Berkshire Regional School District. Objective, promote the quality of life in Dalton, developing a marketing campaign to promote Dalton as a good place to raise a family, suggest a leadership grow Dalton. Then we move on to chapter four, infrastructure. Goal, maintain and to improve in buildings in, sorry, maintain and improve the buildings in town. Objective one point one, improve the town hall, upgrade internet capabilities throughout town halls, suggest a leadership town manager.
That we had as a completed.
We did, yeah, this is just all the high priorities, it's all of them.
If you can skip the.
You want to skip the ones that are.
Yeah, skip the ones that are completed, yeah, sure.
Sure, I didn't, yeah. So then, so one and two are complete, minimize tax impact, support the development of solar farms and town property to reduce the cost of electricity on the town, suggest a leadership town manager. Improve cellular service, work with cellular communication companies to provide additional service throughout town, suggest a leadership town manager. Chapter five, services, maintain services currently offered in town, provide high-quality town services in a cost-effective manner, encourage additional cooperative regional agreements for providing necessary municipal services, suggest a leadership town manager. Continue to investigate budget stretches to reduce costs, including financial forecasting and limited borrowing to capital projects or rented revenue anticipation, suggest a leadership town manager. Continuing on, investigate combining services, town services in the fire and water district in order to meet all towns' needs and costs, and allocate resources accordingly, suggest a leadership town manager. Objective one point two, educate the voters, improve education of voters on budget and long-term effects of their decision, suggest a leadership town manager. Develop an electronic newsletter to better educate the residents, suggest a leadership Select Board. Objective one point four, share services among municipalities and districts, investigate the sharing of administrative staff between the town and fire district, suggest a leadership town manager. Goal three, promote cost-effective education through the Central Regional Berkshire School District. Objective, CBRSD, yeah, CBRSD regional cooperation, revisit the regional agreement between the seven towns to ensure equitable payments based on enrollment, suggest a leadership as a CBRSD.
And just a note on that, that's actually after 12 months of effort by the school committee in the seven towns, there's a draft regional agreement ready for presentation, it's going to go through legal review, and a school committee review and approval by a school committee, and it'll go out to the, their targets to have it for our annual town meeting in '24, the new agreement, so. There's a lot of, it took 12 months to, you know, go through that detail, which is, it's not, it wasn't easy for the group. But it was significant work, and actually, just for the, our record here, is that they actually contracted with a consultant group to help facilitate those discussions, and some of the, I think, challenging discussions around OPEB and the retirement fund. So I used to be on the seven-town advisory, Yanko, I stepped down, Dan's now represented on the seven-town advisory, back to the school district, so. Now, David, please.
Things about Disney, after the Select Board, I mean, is that reasonable, you know, Select Board leadership, maybe, maybe that's a good term, but to say the Select Board needs to work on some of these things, and they should go on the other stuff that you guys do, is that reasonable?
Yeah, that's kind of my point earlier, going, we are, okay.
My follow-up is, if you need to develop a website, form a website committee, and ask people, ask all the people that have IP experience in town, and I'm sure there's many of them who are willing to work on that, and manage that with you. You guys, you guys, you guys got to know, you guys are saying, managing a website.
I think it's important to note, at this point, it's suggested leadership, it doesn't necessarily mean that they will do all the work, but they will certainly, whatever department or.
Who else is going to step up if it's.
But I've got some suggestions, I'm making some notes for, you know, other ideas for suggested leadership on some of these topics that I'll share with.
There's three people on the Green Committee who have extensive own website and IP experience to make the work do this stuff, and they don't know, and much more, it's kind of.
Yeah, we're not going to develop a new website.
Well, yeah, that's my point.
Yeah, where we are right now, just.
Well, we will direct resources to do that, which.
David, to your point, there's a small little group, myself, Tom, and Todd.
Yeah.
What's Todd's name? Todd?
He's on Green.
He's on Green Committee, so he's helping us kind of look at just what's out there, right, for like the different providers of a website, right? And then we're going to take that and then get more of a group together, figure, okay, what's the framework, what's the design, all that kind of stuff, so. We're like step one.
Yeah, if you find the expertise in town.
Yeah, there's a lot, there's a lot of talent in town, to your point, for sure, yeah.
Right, I, I'll just piggyback on what David said, really, because I have written that exactly, or suggested leadership Select Board, like, I just kept hearing suggested leadership Select Board, on things that, you know, we're six years in on this master plan, and I keep on some of these things, and I just agree and want to promote the idea of you guys, you know, looking at this, and, you know, calling, at least putting a shout-out for people in the town who are interested and enthusiastic about these issues, and give them a chance to try to do something.
Yeah.
I mean, what's it hurt? We all know, you're Select Board, you're the ones who get to make the final decision, okay, but like.
Just, just an observation, just a comment on that, as I think through like the Dalton Day and some of the other activities in the ADA, we've actually had some people step up for the ADA committee and for the Dalton Cultural Committee as well, and I think the Open Space Rec Committee is a good group, the Green, everybody's kind of, I think there's a lot there, to your point, but just put more out there, for sure.
Well, and for example, so we talked about like promoting solar development, the radio is not, has not really been consulted as the people who should be consulted about solar development in town, at any level, if it's, you know, either to find it, consider it, review it, whatever, that was and is an option, is what?
And then all the Green Committee, there are people who are on committees who have expertise, expertise in either.
That has not been the way.
To your point, we should leverage that more, yeah.
Has not been the way it's been done, okay. I wanted to ask a quick question, oh, a number of things for grow Dalton, and I do not know if grow Dalton even exists anymore.
They are continuing to meet, they just started meeting again, they're going to have another meeting October 16th.
Who are they, and how?
Go to the stationary on October.
October 16th, 11:00 AM.
No, that's not the town committee, and I don't know if it's like a.
No, they're a nonprofit organization that's going to help.
Okay, so you can send me that. I have one other quick question. Several years back, before any town had a dispensary, I do remember a certain amount of, I'm from the airport, hysteria that Dalton would get a dispensary and this would be bad for that town. I mean, now, as we have had a chance to reflect on how this is affecting some towns and their economies, I'm just wondering if there is a bylaw that is preventing a dispensary company to our town?
I was chairman of the planning board when I, well, we all engaged the board and the town and the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission on developing a cannabis bylaw that was cohesive and, you know, meshing with the state laws that had just passed the time, and town voters did approve the bylaw at town meeting, and there are licenses available.
So people could.
People could open a dispensary.
Okay, I just wanted, because I didn't know.
There's nothing restricting it, other than the bylaw, the bylaw items and state law, obviously, there's very specific restrictions there, but there's licenses available.
So, and are we as welcoming as Pittsville?
We're not promoting, the town hasn't promoted it, I don't think, one bit at all.
Because I think it's an economic.
It absolutely could tie into economic development, you know, attracting more businesses, attracting.
And the thing people are concerned about, hopefully, they're seeing this.
Sure, Dr. Ruth.
Yeah, I'm saying, why not, bring in more money.
Yes.
A legitimate business, we've got it, we've got it a lot today, a gas station right in the middle of town, money would be great factor.
It is zoned for that area.
You just always have the Clark story, having this answer.
I know, so why do you think they're not coming here, maybe we should port somebody.
And just to let you know, we are in the process of revising our employment physical process to, you know, line up with the state law, this is now a legal substance, right?
Right, and we can see now, with the benefit of experience of how these dispensaries are operating various towns, and I haven't heard, mark my other feeling about it, a lot of negatives. Right, and we can see now with the benefit of experience of how these dispensaries are operating in various towns, and I haven't heard of, mark my other feeling about it, a lot of negatives.
But the work was done, to Dan's point, it's like, we're ready for it, we're ready to receive it.
We're not promoting it though, and certainly as part of communication and marketing, right?
Part of the growing economy, one of the things that is growing.
We could certainly do more to attract businesses who want to do that here. They're choosing other towns right now, but there is opportunity, maybe people just don't even know that Dalton allows it.
Welcomes it.
Or welcomes it.
Or businesses in general. I said that forever, that I don't feel that we're a welcoming community for businesses in general.
We have one tax rate, that's definitely a good thing, you know, other towns have a split tax rate.
Yeah, and to your point, the broader point, the Dalton redevelopment project has taken over the work of the Development and Industrial Commission, which includes promoting the town and maybe ones, or a combination of them, that produce the Dalton video that is on the website a couple of places.
What's that committee?
The Dalton redevelopment. And Yanko's been working with them with the idea to have on the website all of the vacant.
Commercial, thanks.
What infrastructure is available to it and.
We could partner with Dalton Community Television and make a video about the available spaces in Dalton so that people who are far away could see what kind of physical spaces are available for open businesses in Dalton.
Yeah, almost an accounting of.
Yeah, here's a building, and this is where it is, and we go in, it's got this, you know, it's got this miniscule thing. You can see what the neighboring stores look like, and this is on this block, you know.
Well, start with.
So, so a commercial inventory of vacant property, yes, yeah, I suggested that to Mr. Boyle, and he was very much for that.
Close by.
There are, there are real estate, commercial real estate brokers living in town, for sure, I think, and businesses here, that's what you do.
Shall I continue?
Awesome. Great suggestions, yeah.
Okay, so we move on to Chapter Six for housing. Goal is to address the local housing needs. Objective, planning for new development. Develop a plan to increase housing options for seniors in town. Suggest a leadership is select board. Then we will move on to.
That's the other one, with select board going, wait, without the housing experts.
On the leadership side.
This isn't, this isn't, you are suggested leadership, this is a master plan in two thousand and sixteen, so you're not making this up as you go.
No, I'm not, sure. Okay, so then we move on to transportation, and we talked about fees briefly. So, two on completed, so we have increase towns' access to state funding. This goes under provide a complete and well-maintained system of roads, I'll just that as a goal. Increase the towns' access to state funding. Work with Mass DOT to update the list of non, of town-maintained roads to receive additional Chapter ninety funding.
Do you know anything about why DOT would not have an updated list of roads in Dalton and road miles?
I don't, I don't. I just did a quick look at it, like I said, yeah, go, I mean, I just picked a random street, I knew it was newer street, that we maintained. But was, they don't have.
Not on their list?
The number of road miles?
Yeah.
It's not, it's not part of their road miles.
You just select them with polygon and just.
Oh, with, on the access geo, it depends on which GS program you're talking about, but you can select the polygons. I don't know if they have one for this specific thing.
Because it's on Master.
It's a master.
It's on Asta, you just check the ninety, it's on Dalton, just go to that.
Okay.
The transportation thing has, has, has more dramatically since twenty seventeen or sixteen, whenever this is. The whole EV infrastructure should be, should be able to this, considering electric vehicle charging and such.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great point, as we add that in, and we'll, you know, leverage some of the grant money that is coming through for some EV charges, yeah.
We do have some small developments on that front, but it's not specifically named as a priority.
So this is a question for the audience, I think, when you look at roads in Chapter ninety. So, Tom and Bud, I believe our Chapter ninety funding has been an average around two twenty, two forty a year?
Down to two fifteen.
Two, down, down to two fifteen?
Yeah.
So when you look at the roads and you look at the street scan that we did, which shows like ninety-nine percent of roads need some attention for, I think that number was like nineteen million dollars. So we're never going to get all roads done, right? So back to your point about setting expectations, not going to happen, under, under any stretch of the imagination, right? So. Yeah, but what we do is we take that two fifteen and we kind of just like, let's sit in the bank for a little while to, to get there potentially. So then we have a bigger chunk, because the cost becomes lower if we can say, hey contractor, here's a section of roads, right? That makes it cheaper on the, on the, yeah, per mile cost versus saying, okay, we got two fifteen, let's go do two roads, let's go do two, you know. So it's like that strategy around roads is, is important, but if roads become a top priority, then we could go to Tom Beeden and go, hey, we want to invest our two fifteen plus five hundred to do this, you know? But now we're going into debt, right, to do roads, so.
At the same time, you know, you know how many, how many roads are in town, you know what to use, you know, you know what to yearly upkeep maintenance is, there are, there are all kinds of, you know, metrics to use that, so, okay, we, if we're going to have our foot roads, we need to fix, you know, eight, eight point five miles a year, maybe, and that costs three million dollars and needs twenty-five crew members, so. Have you heard your transportation guy or your road guy come over and glance at, if we're going to have our foot roads, it's going to cost twelve point five a year. Can we afford to do that? No, okay, this is only, let's make a plan and tell, tell the people on North River, tell the people on Gulf Road, that it's not, it's just not going to happen. Step one.
Well, to your point also, if you could tell them, but in twenty twenty-six, you're going to be, you know, just like the plan to do it, but it's not this year.
It's also kind of hard to plan out roads three, four years out, because two years ago, Dalton's vision road was pretty decent. You know, we knew where coming, the big project was coming, and then in February, it was like the bylaw out there, and that road just got totally destroyed. So we couldn't say, oh, we're going to pay other street and this street and this right now, Dalton didn't be the main one that it is. We'd have to throw that and, you know, take care of that first.
We pivot, yeah.
Actually pulled off other things. So it's kind of, it's hard to strategize a few years out.
Given that roads last five, five years, we have thirty-five miles of roads, you can, you could put a plan together that says, in North River, it's many roads, it's going to cost as much money that this may prove people.
To, to your point though, David, the, the street scan project, the street scan program would allow us to say, how much we want to invest each year on roads, and we can plug in a number, call three hundred fifty thousand, and that program actually tells us where our priority should be. It lists, because it could be crack ceiling, it could be this, it could be that, but then, then Bud takes all of that with his knowledge and says, well, based, even based on that, I recommend that we do this, which may be different than the program, which is fine. At least now we have a tool that we have a baseline on what the conditions are, yeah.
It's an expectation.
Yeah. Yep, yeah.
I was just going to say that's key to developing the future road maintenance plan, but Bud makes a good point. Other roads become priorities, even if you had made the best plan, other roads will come up to the top where we have to reallocate resources. So it's not perfect, but the street scan, I think, is a game changer for us.
Absolutely.
In terms of planning.
It's another data, it's another, it's another clean data point that feeds it into the, into the process. Yanko, this is the, so this is a high priority stuff out of master plan, we're kind of going over the ones that are still open. There are, I know it's, it's probably on top of mind for a lot of, lot of our residents, and so I'm just going to pivot here a little bit, so apologies for that.
No, no worries.
I want to make sure we have enough time to, to, to think through this, or what's the next step. A lot of the residents that are here tonight, I was, I was not at this particular meeting, but the town decided we're going to invest a million, whatever, to take down the old Dalton High School, or the Dalton School here, was it high school or the school?
It was the old school, it was a high school at one time.
It was a high school, okay. And then, and then we're going to take this land and for return on investment, we're going to build houses, right? So the houses were now delayed because of the flood mitigation issue. So now we have the Walker Brook coming in there, right? And we went through the engineering study, we had four or five different options, which came before the board, and we decided that we're going to route that water around that area, I think, is the one we selected. There was one like daylight, and we said we're not going to do daylight, and then we went another direction.
There was a couple of ways of running it around.
Creating a second.
And, and we'll, we'll leave the original culprit open as part of that to increase capacity, so.
Right, so, so is our, is our plan to, to put housing up here, or what do we?
I couldn't answer that. The town voted at town meeting, I was the chairman of the building committee to knock that thing down, Cheryl was on the committee. And what happened was the town voted to knock it down and provide six building lots.
Subdivide itself lots.
It was six or seven, correct?
We said lots, size, commensurate with the surrounding neighborhood, basically, whatever the size lots of roads are, same size lots.
Same size.
If you want to get bigger, you know, I think we talked at one point about having a more dense thing, but I think we ended up with.
Yeah, they can be apartment houses, they can be duplex, duplexes.
So this goes back to, how, how far back, Bud?
So, it was like moving into a house, you saw it in lots.
No, later than that.
The lots would get.
The property, a developer provided a whole thing.
I'll have to go back and look exactly when I was.
Was it before twelve?
Huh?
Was it before two thousand and twelve?
No, it was after.
After, okay.
After, yeah, it was when I first was on the board, so.
One, one thing to consider as part of that is, would we want to say that some one or two units be affordable?
Yeah, I don't mean yes to your question, I mean, yes is a great question.
The sad thing about the whole thing is the junior high would have been converted to thirty-one apartments, but it failed by eight votes, so that's, that's why. Eight votes, yeah.
And they would have had a pool in the basement?
Yeah.
All the benefits, all the benefits.
That would have had to stop that.
So I, I think just to put on a radar screen is, you know, as we think of the Walker Brook flood mitigation, what, what's next with this parcel? And I think what I've heard from residents is that if we do anything, if we think about anything doing different, we have to bring it back to the town for that discussion.
Yeah, any change of plans, I think we have to go back to the voters.
Yeah, I think the, because one thing I don't think you mentioned is that we had to borrow a lot of money to take that building down.
One point, two million bucks we had to borrow for that.
So it was that, so that's not going to be easily just like undone, like we told people, because they weren't voting in town meeting, because I personally stood up and explained to everybody that it was going to be on the ballot a week later, and that even voting to do this and take the building down, that we would have to still vote at the ballot box to borrow the money. I forget exactly what the measure was it was going to require in order for it to happen, and it all passed, so then it happened. And people absolutely had an understanding that financially we're going to sell off these lots.
Yeah, make a return on.
Get some return, and then you'll have.
Future tax revenue.
And then you'll have future tax revenue and the whole thing, and that was part of it, and yeah. It's just not right to turn, turn around now and go, oh, no, we just wanted to open the basement, it's completely, it's a huge financial decision.
I don't think that's anyone's planning.
Some people want it like that.
There's still people that want to see it be used another way, but it was voted on that way, and that's the plan at the moment.
It was a commitment that was made to the people who are paying up.
At this point, it's pending the drainage work that needs to happen.
Because I would never vote to build a building new till we fix it.
Which we can talk about tonight as well. Should we finish just going through these?
I'm almost finished, yeah.
Drill down.
Sorry for the pivot.
No, no, you are, no, it's, no worries. Okay, so then we go to goal number two, improve alternative transportation options. Objectives is to improve mass transit options, this is under transportation, by the way, so. Work with the Berkshire Regional Transport Authority, BRTA, to expand public transportation routes in town.
I can pretty well say that one failed because they've actually reduced.
Yeah, they reduced some of the.
Yeah, there's, yeah, no, no control on that one, no.
And, and that, you, you know, for, for you see things that involve outside agencies, for the school district and things like that, not necessarily realistic objectives, but not, not to say that we shouldn't work towards working with the general organizations and things like that. If we're going to do it, I think it has to be really specific and measurable.
I'm going to make a comment, I don't mean to take this off to like another pivot here a little bit, but just thinking out loud as we're going through this and having these conversations with a great group here. And Henry, you're probably very familiar with all the social terms of health issues and healthcare, right? Again, patients, their appointments and whatnot. You know, it's a big thing for communities, and the only way to solve this is really between hospital and community partnership. And just like, I think with our, with our population growing in age and the ability to get from point A to point B, you know, not only for medical appointments, but for other food, you know, those that might have food insecurity, things like that, just to kind of put it on our radar screen at some level, but thinking through that.
Have an urgent care facility in town?
It's great, they, they'll spot for it, for sure, I mean, absolutely, I think, Cheryl?
Do we still have a senior center van?
We do.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
How is it used and where is that known?
I don't know.
The senior center van, how do you like schedule transportation like that?
Oh, you call up, they have a scheduler here, you call up and they schedule.
It's just something to think about, how to most efficiently and best use that as available.
More the communication side.
Yeah, if a lot of people knew about that or certain days, and then if you had doctor's appointments and needed that, maybe people would bundle, you know, like, oh, Wednesday morning.
They take people grocery shopping and everything.
Okay, but I think.
I think a lot of people are using it.
A lot of people using, you see it over, all over.
But the awareness of it, right, so.
Yeah, right, the awareness and also the efficiency of how it is operating, I don't know.
Or do we need a second van, a second driver, because we have more need, right?
We did.
No, or, I'm saying, do we need that?
Right, but also, right, but getting people to bundle or go, you know, like it goes, oh, it goes to the price shop or at, or grocery shop on Friday mornings. So plan your day, like it's going to take how many people it can hold, how often does it drive around with one person, you know, that kind of thing.
Yeah, I don't know.
You know, it might be being used by one or two people or maybe six people, right, and if whole people, it kind of has a regular whatever, you know. You know, try to bundle.
We're just making, now we can talk to Kelly about that, but at least it's available, we know that, not the communication.
But just something that could, that's not that hard to try to work on, you know, that.
I think our, our council and agent, they actually got a, a grant, I think, for communication newsletters and things of that nature, get more of that stuff out. They have a very active social media Facebook page of the different programs and things, but how many people, you know, so I think Kelly has that on radar screens, get that out, but, yeah.
And the PBTA also did, I was working with them in my graduate studio, we were trying to improve their, the routes, and one of the big focuses was elderly communities and in rural areas, and, you know, bus routes, they don't find them, because of ridership issues, they discontinue them, but people still need to get places. And so one of the ideas that was floating around, I'm, I'm sure BRTA, that's thought about this, but as with route reduction, if they're clearly not, I don't think they're implementing it, but having on-demand service for, for elderly residents or even just, for any resident really, just having on-demand service and to be able to keep people accessible to their appointments, to their grocery shopping, wherever they need to go, but they don't have to have a consistent route going on it.
It's, 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 if there's a need, there's probably also an economic driver, because Medicare will reimburse for rides and medical appointments.
There you go.
So the Uber Health, the Live Health and things like that, so I don't know what the licenses or things like that, there's some going inside a new business in town. Maybe an option in Berkshire, yeah.
Yeah.
I've heard of public transportation, I was, I was a, I was a, I was about coming to town.
In Great Carolina, they have.
It's like five dollars, you can go anywhere in town.
Yeah.
Yeah, like a flat, very reasonable, like, yeah, definitely.
Wow, interesting, interesting. And we're going through, anybody else has made a comment that has any thoughts at the moment, or still listening in, everybody's good?
One suggestion is we should probably wrap this up so we can get to operation status, let's head in.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll quickly get through these.
Which ties into this, of course, but.
Alright, so chapter eight, land use, goal, to maintain the character of Dalton. To update the zoning bylaws. Apply for grants, retain a consultant, sorry, apply for grant funds to retain a consultant experienced in land use law to aid the town in accomplishing bylaw and regulation improvements. Suggest the leadership as the planning board. Goal number two, to preserve and support agricultural uses. And one here that we haven't looked at is to maintain farmer's right to farm, to adopt a right to farm bylaw. This community is an agcom community, but it is not a right to farm community. And suggest the leadership would be the planning board for that.
One question on the previous one. Dan, for applying for grant funds to retain a consultant to aid the town in accomplishing bylaw and regulation. Was that coming before we had a town planner? Or did we just go with the town planner?
We had a town planner at the time.
Okay, so that was additional.
But I think it's additional resources and I think how we were approaching that was our relationship with Berkshire Regional Planning Commission, they have a lot of expertise and provide. But now that we have Bianco here as well, I think it's kind of a joint effort of town planner, planning board, and either a consultant or BRPC. To help with bylaws, development or writing of new bylaws or changing existing bylaws.
Especially with, when it goes with like land use law, when I see vague, says, I can't, can't give legal advice.
Can't give legal, exactly.
So that's where I get kind of hung up on, yeah.
And this is vague, update the zoning bylaws, very vague.
Very vague.
But certainly there's things you can do, which, you know, the cannabis bylaw, which we had to do because state laws had been passed. Was a part of that. Updating the zoning bylaw doesn't necessarily fall under maintaining the character of Dalton necessarily, if that, you know, that was a goal of the people who attended and put their stickers on the priorities. So there's a lot of overlap here, but in any case, it is a collaborative effort. The planning board, the town planner and BRPC has been invaluable in helping with that bylaw as well as the ADU accessory dwelling unit bylaw. Those were the two main bylaws that were changed recently. And there were some proposals to change others that didn't pass, such as the drive-through bylaw.
Dan, one, just one more thing. If the zoning laws could be in the character of Dalton, if we had design review, I'm sorry, I don't know, do we have a design review section in the planning?
Yes.
In the zoning, but, cause that gets to Cheryl's point too about.
Yes, ADU and.
Any building out here would have to be consistent with the neighborhood, is that covered?
It's covered in the ADU as well as the cannabis bylaw. The new bylaws that were passed recently.
Okay.
But there's no design review for building by right necessarily.
Okay, so that would.
You get a building permit, but.
Include in any, any.
But that's a good point.
Okay, so chapter nine, natural and cultural resources. Goal, preserve and protect historic and cultural assets. Objective, preserve, protect and promote the history of Dalton. Establish an education program on the history of Dalton such as the Fitch Who's House, crane paper making, the cemeteries through the schools, and cemeteries through the schools, libraries, senior center, ten television, web and other venues. Suggest the leadership is the historic commission. Develop a tax incentive for buying and improving older homes, suggest the leadership as a select board. Goal three, to educate the residents about the natural resources in town. Objective, encourage educational programs which foster spirit of preservation. Work with schools to create an environmental class which includes a conservation project in the field, suggest the leadership CRSBD. Develop a trail system with interpretive signs describing the flora and fauna between Nessasus and Wakona. And the leadership is CRSBD.
I wonder if we could make a, not make a vote, no vote, but back to Dave and Cheryl's point earlier about the Green Committee, you know, like things like this, we probably should, suggest the leadership should probably pivot.
To Green Committee.
Not CBR.
He got it, it's very.
Some of them, some of them decide to stake CBRSD, you know, they don't give a crap about.
Well, it's, it's not, it's not on their scope, right, but they could be a good partner in this, they could be a partner, but not necessarily lead, right?
You know, they, they designated.
Yeah.
And one town's not gonna dictate the priorities to CBRSD either.
Right. So get a creative committee.
Yeah.
So we can make that adjustment, we don't need to vote.
And some of these suggested leaderships had two, there was like a primary and a secondary, in the interest of making this document not overwhelming, I just included the primary. But you're right in some of those, CRSBD might've been primary, but then there was a secondary which was a town board or committee. But I believe you have an excellent point, that's, you can flip it, yeah.
To Dave's point, probably a lot of entities don't know that.
Exactly, exactly.
Suggested we don't have.
That's, that's a little bit of a mistake, aren't we?
Yeah, so.
You tell me, responsible for this stuff.
Dr. mentioned something I think really important that I didn't think about till you said it. Bob, are we getting the Crane Paper Museum back? Because you know, with the new security fencing that they're putting in?
At this point, it's closed to the public, yeah.
What's that?
At this point, Crane Museum's closed to public.
And they're operating out of the Herman Melville, I went there this summer, it was still great in one room.
Just for the fall.
What?
Just for the fall.
Okay.
They are looking at alternate sites.
In Dalton, I hope?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Cause we should do everything we can to get them out.
Yep.
Like that's always been like such a great, I've been there a couple of times, every time I'm like overwhelmed with how great it is for like, like no space at all. It's like walking thinking, this is gonna take a few minutes and we're there like a couple of hours having a great time, so.
Yeah, it's a shame that it's locked up, let me tell you.
So, do you know that, like?
No, I'm thinking.
They're behind the security fencing that is now not gonna allow the public to get to where it is.
Yeah, it would be a great collaborative for to do something with the crane paper and Dalton's history. Historical commission.
They just need to find a place.
You talk about getting people to find the, the whole idea of people coming to the town and the history of Dalton, how are we not gonna have the crane paper?
Yeah.
So, doesn't it take a lot of space?
And the final chapter, open space and recreation. Goal, preserve plans for open space recreational needs. Cover objective one point two already, sorry, we did not, objective one point two, expand the recreational opportunities in playgrounds and playing fields. Explore obtaining the pits that holds the pond and surrounding environments for future use as a town swimming area, suggest the leadership as the parks commission. Explore the feasibility of moving the high school's use of the softball fields at Pine Grove Park to the high school. And suggest the leadership as the parks commission. And then I like to summarize this, saying, within the thirty-two high priority action steps, fourteen have either been completed or are in the process of being complete. The following section provides a full breakdown of the Dalton master plan, starting with the overall vision of the town of Dalton, identifying the goals, objectives and action steps. And then finishing at the final pages with the implementation strategy of the plan. And with that, we can either move on to the section or do you guys have comments?
The, I think the softball field issue, I don't think that's moved to the, moved to the school, but we do have a North Mountain Park area now as well. That, Tom, do you know what the status of that is? I should've hit markup when he was here, but.
I don't think there's been any movement on it though.
Okay.
At this point, we've kind of focused on the surrounding.
There was some environment, any comments?
Yeah, there are restrictions on the use of the.
Yeah. Any, any comments?
The thing was, it got caught up with the use, because nobody knew at that point, it's the section, the nine acres for the park and for that. There was some question as to whether or not it actually was considered part of the APR. There was some question about the legitimacy of all the different stuff, so it got caught up in litigation basically for a couple of years while the town just, you know, went back. And there was one point I think the state thought it was part of the APR, so they were including it in all the plans and then it got pulled out and then there was some letters back and forth. So I think now that the property has been, that you give the town, the APR property, I believe, does that finalize?
Uh, yeah, we'll wait for, the state has first, first party refusal, so I think we'll wait for the state to say yea or nay, but we have a.
Town's hands.
Yeah.
Right, so I think the whole thing has been on hold, just waiting to see the finality of.
Once that clears off.
The other hundred and forty something, whatever acres, something acres up there and how it all fits in. In terms of environmental impact, that's been cleared, so it was, the oil tanks that were up there were mitigated.
Yeah.
The structure, now it's a matter of just, I mean, there's more, you know, obviously that hasn't been done, but I think that's the forward point of.
Okay.
Of once all that, with that is out of the way, then I think the town can move forward kind of in the faith that fixing the road, you know, open up, doing whatever the plan is for the park up there, I think we can move forward.
Yeah. Okay.
Question.
Yes.
Has the town ever looked into solar development up there?
I don't know.
I know, what?
Solar development up in that section? I don't know.
No, not that I know of.
As far as I know.
Henry?
I wonder if the splash pad is more practical than swimming area?
That's cool.
It was a.
Yeah, it was under the pits.
The pits one.
I'm not seeing how that's feasible, that's basically a private drainage pond for their gravel operation, but, but I think splash pad would be wonderful somewhere.
Yeah. Alright, moving on to the operations.
Yeah.
Bianco, that was well presented, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
I gave you a lot of notes, but because of the time, I'd like to just cover a few things in the first couple of sections. Department's made some focus really on facilities, major anticipated expenses and overhauls back. So if I can just mention a few things on the, on the first part.
Okay.
First, I just wanna, I wanna give a shout out to Bud and his crew here, because, you know, they've always had a lot of work with highways, sewer, cemeteries and parks. And now we've added the transfer station to its responsibilities and everything seems to be running really smoothly. So I just wanted to say that. That said, they're operating at their limit. And so it's amazing how much they can accomplish and I think, I appreciate how responsive Bud is to issues that come in. But it's something that might, we might look at. Those operations sometime kind of, just to make sure that, well, you know, one of the problems with sidewalks is the time that it takes to get them done. And so it's either money that you spend or you pay somebody else to do it, which we don't have a lot of. Or we have a crew that can take care of it and maybe, you know, putting in the black cost would be much more costly than putting in the concrete. Even over time, we might have to work on it more frequently, but it would be, it would be cheaper. It's something that I think all towns are kind of faced with and there's a general capacity problem. But just the fact that it doesn't seem to be affected, but, and that he seems to be able to get everything done and anybody could ever ask him to do it, except maybe the sidewalk. They're really at capacity and it's really difficult for them to take on new initiatives or we can pay for it, but, so that's, that's kind of.
So is build it internal capacity or use an external contractors to deliver the services in town at a foundational? Is that kind of what we're thinking about?
You know, I, I think it's pretty seamless now, you know, bringing in people, we do a lot of the prep work, we did all the prep work for the, for the basketball court at Pine Grove. And brought people in right at the right time, everything worked, it was a, it was a very well managed, you know, project there. And it was, so that's kind of the best that we can, that we can do. We can't do everything, we don't need a paper, you know, but I don't know, do we need a paper, do we want a paper?
I do want to use a small paper after this.
Now's the time to ask her for her, hold your peace, right?
And, and I'll talk more about it in the facility, but this is kind of a beat up to, it's foreshadowing in the literary sense there. I just wanted to mention that. Financial functions. Things work. I am having a financial management review done by the department of revenue, they'll be visiting actually on Thursday interviewing people. They will wanna talk to all the select board members, wanna talk to chair of the finance committee, they're gonna talk to a lot of players in town and see, you know, what might happen. They're used to looking at towns at all different levels of capacity and ability and responsiveness and all of that. So they'll fit somewhere in there and then they will say, okay, well if you're here, only suggest that you work on these tasks. So they'll get eight or ten or twelve tasks to work on to come up to best practices. And that will be based on a kind of an internal assessment as well as the external assessment. They'll see what people here feel that they need and then they'll make some recommendations based on their own observations. So I'm really looking forward to that. And it's free and it's a great service that they provide to towns. And we're getting one of their senior people and the director of the department as our staff people. The word break on.
That sounds fantastic.
Some of it was spurred by, by my realization, there are some things that we do that we don't.
As far as efficiencies or just practice or?
Yeah, practices, practices, they've evolved over the last ten, fifteen years.
Yeah.
They're, they're no longer.
Sure.
So, so we'll get all of those identified and get rid of the deficiencies and maybe, maybe go a bit beyond that and do some best practices. Just to mention that, I think we got a very successful move back to town hall. We're all back, we saved a bunch of money, not only on the bank, but on the ticket shop. And we're, we're still dealing with some things, like we hadn't put in new internet wires, we didn't have anybody take out the old telephone wires. So we have, we have wires and various ways and Jeff's been great about that, so.
And Jeff, thanks for jumping right in, you, you, another one, join the crew and then you get.
Yeah, right in the right moment.
Yes, exactly.
And speaking of jumping in, we had a, we had a water issue on the third floor, which leaked into the library. And Jeff was on that really quickly and saved a whole lot of damage from being done. But we're spending a fair amount of money, there's asbestos and bacon included, there's a whole lot of plaster that needs to be taken out. And it's kind of open now.
What was the cause of the water?
It was an overflow, toilet overflow.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, it.
There's two wet spots on the floor of the library. The thing where the water finally made that, the issue is that to dry everything out in the space between the library ceiling and the floor, we're having.
Yeah.
Involved old plaster and then having involved asbestos.
Asbestos removal.
Right now, the whole half, the whole section of the library is all closed off. The asbestos has been baited.
Okay.
Service mask is still in there, now that asbestos has gone, they're taking up, they need to take out and dry it out, but they need to dry out and hopefully start to put it back together next week maybe.
Well, good catch, yeah.
Yeah, so, just when I thought I was getting settled in, it was a.
Just come back in at a nice time, we'll take that whole discussion, we'll say, in my previous slide, I was involving some of these corpus kind of these sessions, you know, there were things like this and everybody presented what they thought were priorities. And the guy that out and looked at it and said, we're trying to have pretty well for us. He said, we can't fix everything this year, it's too, it's just too much. Let's, let's, let's do this, and he told us, we can't fix marketing and communication also, let's fix operation. Let's, let's, let's do this. And he told us, we can't fix marketing and communication also. Let's fix operation. So we're, we're going to focus on fixing everything in this, in this one job. And I'll suggest infrastructure as such a good chapter to focus on rather than, because once you get a big foundation going, then the rest gets easier and easier. So, and then I'd say, look, twenty twenty four is going to be zero digit for infrastructure. We're gonna, we're gonna close as much as we can. We're gonna fix that as best we can. And these are the reasons we're going to do that. Because we need a firm base. And everything else needs a slide for, for a year, you know, everything else will survive for you. Also, we bet, or easier in a year. So we need to make a proclamation and get everybody on board.
And that, that's exactly what we're trying to do. This is a starting point to start that, start that, hey, brush off the two thousand sixteen master plan where all that great work occurred. Right? What's still relevant that as far as prioritization? Look at our operational structure here. We're kind of with the, the, you know, what's working well, what might need to be adjusted. To then create the short term, long term goals vision, right? And to your point, it's like year one could be as simple as improving communication, right? So.
See you next year.
Yeah, so then everything else is kind of, because we could do the financial projections, they go, we're not gonna put ten or twelve million dollars in the fund and go do everything, right? What's, what's, um, affordable? What's, you know, what's, how can we adapt to that affordability? And then, you know, together make those decisions along the way. Yeah, but thank you, David.
Yeah, um, and, and, and related to that, um, staffing items in general, um, I think we have a great staff. I think everybody is, at this point, pretty much stretched to their limit. And, um, I know I promised the plans maybe last year, I would not recommend any new staff in this year's, and I hope, I hope to keep to that. But that said, uh, the more, the more projects, the more work, um, that it does take person hours to do. And figuring out just how much, um, you know, it's an ongoing process, change can be very slow in towns because the funding is an annual cycle and the, the authorizations and, uh, you know, we have had a lot of people, uh, make a transition away from Dalton, vote for, you know, positive personal reasons. To, to your point before, there's, there's, there's good losing people and there's bad losing people. And, and we've had those. But there's been a lot of it and, and that's certainly taken up a lot of my time. And, um, so if there were more staff people, and I, again, I, I don't think I'm, well, maybe depending on what the, uh, the D O R says. But if they say, yeah, you will need somebody who will invest that, I might make that. But, um, I don't, I don't anticipate their recommendations to be in that form. I expect them to be more like functional, but they have to figure out how much we can get done.
Yeah, it's, it's like staffing, like every, you know, I, I think, you know, the three of us in here, we've all had a deal with staff on some level and yourself as well, Tom. It's like, okay, what do we want to achieve? What are the objectives, right? What's the short term? If it's short term, is it temporary staff? Is it long term staff? But then there are areas where there's regulatory issues that just force us to do more, like the health agent, right? We added a part-time
Yeah.
Agent to assist there, right? Or in the finance side. So it's, it, the justification is there in pockets that.
And, and hiring, hiring is difficult. We, um, it was a great step and I, and I very much appreciate select board support for, uh, the raising of salaries and, and keeping them on track to attract people from who might not otherwise consider it a municipal career. Because I think you can see, looking at the salaries, um, a lot of them don't compare to, to what the private sector would get.
And, and I think just something for the folks here and folks at home around that point, because I, I learned a lot going through that process and the benefits. We had a external review of our salaries compared to other towns in Berkshire County. And trying to, we made a commitment to try to stay competitive in that, I think we went mid-range kind of thing, right? But we'll never, we'll never
Sixty percent.
Sixty percent, a little bit above mid-range, okay.
Yeah, because we wanted to be competitive. And it was, there were some towns from outside Berkshire.
Yeah, that's right. And, but we'll never compete against the private companies. All right, so what are the benefits of, you know, yourself, Yanko, you're relatively new.
That's what got me out here, we knew.
Yeah, the benefits of like municipality, you have more of the pensions and more of the other health benefits, more of the other things that kind of fill in the, the gap that you can't get from a private company. So, but the, the recruitment is challenged and if the candidates don't understand that, right, and come into that.
And that's actually a sense like, the same thing with the regional group at B R P C and everybody on there, they can't find people or leaving, they can't find people.
Yeah.
Offering ridiculous, will not be, nothing, the salary that they, that they think they can afford. Nobody's, nobody's on the board. It's just, it's not happening. Now, the people are leaving and they can't replace them.
And then within the, the minimum wage for the state, municipalities are held to the same federal wage standard. So we actually made a commitment to make sure we meet at least federal, um, you know, or the minimum wage in the state. I found that kind of interesting. Municipalities are, don't have to follow that, right? I found it quite interesting, but.
But we made a commitment to.
We made a commitment to at least, at least meet that.
You know, nobody's gonna work for you if you don't.
That's right. That's good.
That's the downside.
Sorry to interrupt you, Tom.
Uh, I was gonna say, if there were, if somebody said, hey, here's, you know, all the money you need, who would you hire? Based on what I've heard and what I have experienced, um, it would be helpful to vote for the treasure and I, have somebody working at some level on H R. Maybe that's a shared position with another town. I'm not sure. And I've also spent an incredible amount of time on procurement. And it's really difficult because that requires a, a lot of concentration. It, it takes a chunk of time when you really want to be able to put documents together and, uh, it's kind of difficult sometimes.
It's regulatory binding. We have to follow a certain process, right? But yeah.
And, uh, so, and, you know, it's, it's been doable, but there have been a lot of projects, a lot of grants. And each of those involve procurement, which involve advertising and bidding and following up and, you know, grant administration and all of that. So it's, it's more than it, than it looks sometimes. So that, that's, that's one thing. Also, I've been thinking about the idea, partly just by looking at the budget, you know, where these sort of larger categories of things. We have, public works is a large category of things. And public safety is a large category of things. Another large category of things is health and human services. And, you know, the senior center here is great. One of the things that staff finds themselves doing here is acting pretty much like a social worker. And directing people to resources and talking with them and figuring out what their issues are and what they need and where they need to go. And this is administrative staff we're talking about, and they're actually functioning as a professional in a field, you know? And that, together with, um, other issues, opioid issues, youth issues, um, uh, some of the things that our health agent is dealing with, with hoarding and, uh, and supporting public safety and some of the, uh, you know, the, the way Pittsfield has some social workers going along on some mental health related calls. I, I can see at some point, something like a social worker in town, but under somebody who's, who's overseeing it all. Somebody like Kelly, not just looking at the senior center, but also overseeing, um, a broader health and human services function. And that would also move better in the service, you know? So I think, I just, in terms of vision, because you asked for vision.
Yeah, I did. Yeah, we did. We support did, yeah.
That, that's, that's something that, that I can see is, is there's kind of a structure in, in the finances to make that.
And that goes all the social determines of health and, and connecting to all these different, yeah.
Yeah.
Love it.
So that, that's a wonder. And, and, uh, due to extraordinary pressure from interest groups, I'm gonna be the Sustainability Director as well as my third, uh, if I had a, you know, a third.
That's gonna be the first thing, because the person would get enough grants to pay for themselves.
Yeah.
So, uh, yeah, there, um, I, it's incredibly heavy that to try to have a transition to a net zero carbon emission, world economy, town. There are things we can do. There are things we can do that would actually improve the quality of life of all the residents. And so I, I put that in, um, as part of the town planning function. Because, you know, planning, you know, it, it includes things that aren't necessarily directly related, but because everything really falls under the banner of sustainability, you know, in one way or another, economic development. Well, let's have green energy production and, and manufacturing and, you know, that sort of thing. And, and that kind of, um, orientation, I think, would be enhanced by somebody who's actually dedicated to that perspective and.
Sustainability is an investment. It's not an extent, because whoever is, it's, the sustainability things and what it is, you know, maybe in history. I'm glad we saved the town every year. There's some streetlights, seventy five thousand dollars on a streetlight over here. And all the different, all the different things.
And we need papers, you guys.
And so we need to pay for it, payback on that. It was like two minutes. We kept the lights and then we'll drop sixty thousand dollars a year.
That's, that's an interesting.
Paid to pay for itself.
It's an interesting perspective, David, and to Tom's, you know, as you're looking at the operational things, I'm just kind of spitballing here. Would, would residents say, yes, let's support a salary of, I don't know, whatever it is, seventy thousand dollars for a sustainability director in return for reducing our costs by X would be the, the target? And so we're paying money out, but we're hoping to get grant money in, we're hoping to get this other stuff in. So it's actually a wash or a plus.
Pay grant money, pay for the sustainability.
You should pay for it plus all the expenses of the program, right? So it's like you, you bucket it up as a separate ask of the town, right? And say, okay, here's a program, but we're gonna need this particular.
We don't see that in the budget, but you see that in comparison from historical stuff.
Right.
You know, billions of the hundred and fifteen, now it's sixty thousand.
Yeah.
I believe the town of Evermont is already doing some, talk to Juliette Hoss. Done over the year.
Okay.
I have a couple of other questions that I'm waiting for Tom.
Tom, sorry. We digress.
Uh, I, I just have one thing to mention under the first sort of things that I'm not really focusing on.
Okay.
Which is that there will be an all committee and department head meeting, uh, scheduled for October twenty sixth, same as we had last year. We invite all the, specifically all the department heads and chairs of committees, but everybody's welcome to come along as well. And the chairs and department heads each have three minutes to say what they've been doing over the last year, what they're doing now, and what they're, what they'd like to do over the next year. And then there can be a little cross talk about how, um, there might be support or again, find potential conflicts or seeing where they might, you know, dovetail and that sort of things.
Can we turn that into a, this is just a suggestion, a stick home work in, can we turn that into a public forum and every committee has a table and people make like a college club night where, you know, you try to recruit members that be holding that.
Yeah, we, because.
Well, I'll tell you, it was an hour and a half last time. And, and, and that was funny, just, just with, you know, one, one report per group. Uh, yes, I, I agree that, you know, more, more public forums are a good thing. They take time to organize and produce and all that sort of thing. And this is, this is my start to trying to get that sort of thing happening. So I, I get the direction. Um, I'm just saying, for, for me now, this is where.
This is twenty sixth.
What I knew at.
October twenty sixth.
At, uh.
Is that Thursday?
That is a, yeah, because we have a.
I thought I said it was the twenty sixth.
Yes, the twenty sixth, Thursday, the twenty sixth at, do you have a time yet?
Uh, usually it's seven.
Usually it's seven p.m.
But to your point, David, when we have the town meeting and we have the educational session like a week before, we talk about how to get more people engaged in the educational session so they're well informed before they go to the town meeting of any type of things that we're asking the town to do. But we're also thinking, okay, how do we expand that educational event to have all the committees there so people can learn about the committees and things of that nature? Just trying to create these other avenues for that.
I ran into people, Mr. Nadezmi and.
Right.
Yeah, there is.
There, yeah, exactly.
What did he do?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're also, um, I'm, uh, also very much hoping to put together a, a town academy, kind of like a citizens, uh, a, uh, like a police academy where you learn about the police, but for all of the departments in town and some of the functions in town as well. So that people can understand, you know, well, right now, this is how things work. Here are their budgets. Here are the people who are in charge of implementing the budgets. Uh, come meet them here and go out to the garage and see where that works.
They give us a ride around in the truck and some of the worst cars in town.
Yeah, you're looking right in the bucket of the thing, drive you around.
Sure.
I think a lot to be expanded on Dalton Day personally. And a lot of this work you're talking about also has to do with better communication. You know, when we had this, um, thing last time, it took an hour and a half for everybody to go around and, you know, I don't have a lot to say about the Conservation Commission except to know what we are, I couldn't let you record it, but I learned stuff about things that were going on in other departments, particularly this back stuff. And I thought, this is stuff a lot of people would be interested to know.
Yeah.
It just needs to get out through some communication vehicle. And that's like other couple of questions I had before. We still.
Yeah, I'm just in, in, in between things, so for time.
Okay, um, I don't feel like, maybe I missed something, but I don't feel like I really got an answer about Walker Brook. I feel like the whole flood issue with this property has been on the table for, I can't even count, I don't know how many years, years, several years. I've heard over the years, certain things were happening, we're applying for a grant, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do that.
Yeah, I.
It's actually on the, it's actually on the major work list here. Yeah, we're getting to it.
I really just want to know like what the status of that is.
It's coming.
It's coming.
It's coming.
Yeah.
It's under mandatory anticipated dispen.
All right, so another thing I've heard through the great part is that we don't have a waste management committee anymore. Is that true? Because we've joined Northern Colored Race.
That's true.
Okay, that said, another thing I've heard for years is that we're gonna get a swap shed at our, um, transfer station. And I have yet to see the swap shed. And I know, at one point when I was working on it, I suggested, you know, that there was a grant we could apply for. And I was with other people that were willing to write for the grant and we were discouraged from actually going forward with it. And so here we are, there's no swap shed. And I'm, I'm just wondering if there actually is still, uh, a need for some kind of waste management or recycling committee to actually encourage more recycling, because I understand like there's a lot to just the business of running the transfer station, so I don't want to put this on the bud. But there are citizens who are interested in our town being better about recycling and reducing our solid waste, which actually costs us less. If we could reduce our solid waste, but I don't hear or see about any particular efforts in the town about this.
We just, uh, last week had a grant for a shed, the transfer station.
Awesome.
Which won't be for swap shop this time. This one's for more of, uh, recycling different things like light bulbs and such, different things will be able to be in the shed. So it's gonna expand there. There's a lot of opportunity in there a little bit.
That's great.
Um, so we're working on that. We've got, I felt that a grant we got, plus we had some R E P lines, so we should be able to, here for the shed, no problem. So that's happening. So that'll become probably some of the.
And then northern Berkshire group, you get to learn from the other communities and towns, what's going on and get ideas.
I go to the meeting every, I think it's the third, every day of the month.
But some of the, some of the good, some of the great things that we added there in, into the transfer station is, is the, the mattress recycling, which there is a cost to it, but at least it's convenient. And it's also convenient for other towns to come, to come to that. And then we have the textile, because you can't throw textiles away. So we have that, that box, which I think we get excess per pound of textiles that go in that box.
So.
Uh, so this is a good, good, good thing instead of a group.
To your point with that.
Yeah.
I'm, is interested in anybody in recycling, in recycling textiles. What percentage of the people in Dalton do you think know that that's there and that's what that's about?
It goes back to the communication, to your earlier point.
Which, but I'm saying, if there was like a recycle, if there were people who took that upon themselves, who were enthusiastic about that and like took it forward as something to, you know, put out more information about, to do something to highlight it so that, you know, residents knew it existed. Like these are kind of things that volunteer people do more than say, you know, a staff person who's just trying to get the work done and I appreciate the work you're doing. done, and I appreciate the work you're doing, but I'm talking about taking it to another level, which maybe, you know, is just, some people are way more.
I think it boils, it boils down to the communication, to, to your earlier point, because even on the transfer station, I was very surprised by the low, I, I call it low volume of recycle-only stickers. I think, what, we're in like the, below a hundred.
Yeah, around.
Sixty, so that basically takes transfer sticker in half. See, I'm still gonna do curbside, because I like the convenience of that, but I wanna recycle, but I don't want to pay the full fare of, you know, a, a transfer station sticker. So, we have a program to reduce that by half, and sixty or so stickers are sold. Out of a town, you know, I, I thought that would be higher, but maybe people don't know about it, or aware of it.
So, what happens with our, um, bylaw, when we had an updated holler bylaw, that is supposed to require the hollers to have single pricing that includes recycling? That was a bylaw that got passed by the town.
I think that particular bylaw, Yanko, you may want to put this with, Yanko.
Yeah.
Sorry, you can call me diaper. I will get it straight, Yanko. Um, sorry.
Oh, no.
But this is the, uh, a bylaw that was passed four years ago, Cheryl?
At least.
At least four years ago, and then we delayed it because of educational things, and then we said, okay, we don't have the resources, and boom, COVID is.
All right.
So, everything just kind of stopped, right?
So, it's a recycling bylaw?
It's a recycling bylaw, right? And the, and the, and the, the commercial hollers were supposed to provide recycling services, uh, things of that nature.
Like one price, there's no, once you split off recycling, then you get people to throw garbage, you know, recyclable products, because they don't pay the additional, it's just human nature.
I think, yeah.
It's a whole thing, and you, that's the way you do it, you send it to the cyclists, it's one price, and you have to do recycling.
Yeah, so I, I, it's something that just got paused.
Okay.
But, but bylaw passed, so you can call that one down.
So, that might reduce the number of people buying stickers, but, you know, that's another issue.
Yeah. Right.
Yeah.
So, I'll call you.
Yeah, um, uh, I have some block on facilities, some major anticipated, two dependencies, and some overall urgent factors. Um, in the town hall, we've gained, we've gained some storage space, because where the photo booth was on the third floor is now, um, an open, an open space. We thought about the possibility of, hey, we could fit a couple of offices in there, but then realized, of course, that the third floor is completely inaccessible, so it's not a great place for new offices, we don't have staff put in there right now.
But when our innovation is done, we're ready to.
It's great for storage.
Yeah.
Um, we, we would have to complete one side of a wall that now looks up over the attic, um, but Jeff and I have been talking about that, and, and we're, it's gonna be a good functional storage space, it's gonna be a, a great place to, to have some stuff. The historical commission is currently, um, putting some of their overflow in there, and we have some extra, extra files and things in there, just, um, obviously, um, the, um, upgrading the accessibility of the town hall is a big deal. Uh, what it takes is, on the state level, the administration and finance people who run the voting to, uh, actually, um, implement a bond bill, there's an economic bond bill, and it has all kinds of things in it, and everybody can say, oh, I got this in the bond bill, and all that sort of thing. And, uh, they often don't get implemented, and when they do, not only items in it get implemented, I did have the occasion to talk to somebody from the administration, and I interviewed him, and said, by the way, pass the bond bill, and fund all the items, and, and he, uh, he smiled. Um, we have a million dollars that will come to the town if the bond bill is passed for town hall, but.
Yeah.
Um, we have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the rest, or five hundred for the, for the, you know, the garage, um, but it's, it's a political thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, there's that. Public safety, um, that's a long-term project because of extensive, um, they're talking on the order of ten or twenty million dollars, that's a, that's an incredible ballpark, yes, but it's, it's a very substantial expense. Um, it would be great, uh, clear to put it as a question, and when we might want to do it, I've, I've, um, you know, reached the idea that as, as our payments for, for our owner come down, at some point, um, we can introduce new borrowing, so that the borrowing level more or less stays level, or it doesn't bounce around too much, so that's, uh, one way that we might approach it, but, again, that's more in terms of long-term planning at this point. Um, unless, uh, you know, there, there's a, there's a lot of momentum behind a municipal building authority, now like the mass school building authority, there will be a lot of public safety buildings, town halls.
That's interesting.
And, uh.
Is that just starting conversation now, or?
Yeah, it's, it's getting some traction.
Yeah.
It's part of the, um, I know the lieutenant governor is very in favor of the former mayor of Salem.
Yeah.
I saw her recently, and she introduced herself as the former mayor of Salem, so to a large the municipal crowd, you know, so, that, that got a laugh.
So, she feels our pain, now she's at the state level?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So, that's, uh, that's something that she certainly heard of, but she needs people to, you know, agitate from the bottom up, too, so any chance you get to talk about a municipal building there, please do so. Um, so that, that could help, you know, if that came along. Um, for public works, um, you know, that's an old garage, it needs a lot of work, as a matter of fact, it needs some immediate work, that I'm gonna talk about on, on Monday and then, uh, it needs some immediate care, which one costs about twelve thousand dollars. Uh, for one of your, at yours.
Didn't we have, not to bring it up, and I'm not sure if this is it, but or not, but didn't we have an accident there, or we got, we had a motion issue with our garage door?
Yeah, so we had, um, it was an accident, oh, we had, uh, we did a, I want to call it self, we called that, it was a.
A self-report.
They had, they had, they had to come anyways for the accident.
Yeah.
So, they hung over there, like, anyone scheduled will come through and point out things for you guys.
We resolved that, though.
We resolved all that, all that, we definitely found a replacement. They were, they were kind of made, they were actually made to shake. But, uh, all red doors, there's seven, five have come to them, that, four were replaced by ten years ago, another three are ancient, but we just, we just changed six of the motors up, so they'd have electric eyes.
Yeah.
That's what was one of the things we had, so it was a pretty big expense, we needed a capital last year.
Right.
One of our doors failed last week, we came to look at it, and looked, it's just too rotten, it's, it's, this means that we change it, just, we're not working out for it, so that's what's top.
Thank you.
Um, we've talked about the senior center now being the emergency operations center for the town, obviously, if there's an emergency, senior center's not gonna be open anyway.
Right.
Uh, permanent, now the upgrade of the non-activity, it's a way for the operations centers, so, so that's all good.
Mm-hmm.
The properties we have here, you know, the former Messerius property, North Mountain, and, um, the town actually owns lots of little parcels here and there, and it's hard to know if anything could actually go on, I haven't done a full analysis, but they did ask for a list of town-owned property, and there's a bunch of it, a lot of it is little slippers.
Little, little spot, little ones, yeah.
And, um.
We sold one a couple of years back to a Budan neighbor that just wanted the extension, and that was.
Yeah, I, 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 I'm not sure exactly where, um, anyway, now I get to talk about Walker Brook.
Wow.
Um, so, I hope this week to issue, um, an invitation for bids for a company to apply for a grant, do the final engineering for the project, do the construction management for the project, from bidding through oversight, and close out the grant. That's, this is a major project, and there are companies that do suit the needs, um, but I have to get it out there. I know the company that did the preliminary engineering would bid on it, um, but I'm running up against deadlines, and I really need to get that out.
I mean.
When I started today, I did, I, what, I almost completely prepared two bids for town hall insulation and the town, uh, town garage insulation and town garage heat pumps, so if anybody gets a chance, if they're almost ready.
So, Tom, the, the Walker Brook, it's a twenty-five percent grant match, right? And we think that, um, it's probably gonna be over, so is that twenty-five percent over a million? So, that would be our shares of millions, because I, I recall the numbers like four million dollars, right?
Yes.
So, our cost would be a million.
Yes.
Right? Then.
So, that's if we get the grant, then we have to take the town meeting, so it's contingent on town meeting.
Right, right.
But how many do you use to do it?
So, would we be targeting this town meeting for that vote? If you look at the timeline of the grant, so be.
The grant has to be submitted by December's second.
Okay, so it'll be like a one million dollar ask for the next town meeting.
Fiscal year twenty-twenty-five?
Twenty-twenty-five.
And, and we'd be, um, obviously, uh.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
That's a major priority.
Yeah.
What are the rest?
Um, I have replacing boilers in town hall, in one way, you know, it's not a million-dollar project, but the question is, what do we replace them with, and, you know, what do we maintain as backdrop of that? Um, do we replace everything with heat pumps, and have just generator backup, or do we have real gas backup, or do we have, you know, backup, you know, what exactly how we want to do it, but that, that's a, I think that's something also that, that we've been very interested in recently, so that, that's a big one. Um, I mentioned here again, major anticipated expenses, future public safety building, some facilities earlier, but, um, it will be a big expense.
Back, real quick, back to the boilers, I mean, are we talking next fiscal year, year after, what, what, what's the timeline?
We should do it soon, because the boilers are old, and, and they need, they need attention. Uh, what it's gonna take is a, an analysis of what the building needs, what are the options that we have, how much do they cost, what's the long-term value of the different options, say, heat pumps, could we offset heat pumps by, uh, the electricity needed by solar panels on the roof, the historical commission wants some solar panels, you know, um, there are, there are a host of interrelated ideas, because we want to do it in a thoughtful fashion for years down the road, they all just want to slap something in there.
Right.
That's it.
So, would we do like an assessment, Jeff, on like the, the structure of the building, the boilers, or, or does, you kind of take that?
The issue, it's, it's all kind of, look into it, it's, the, the boiler that's in the worst shape is the gas boiler that heats the library and the annex upstairs. Um, now that being said, there are heat pumps in the library that do a reasonable job, even at warm, say, this time of year, but in the dead of winter, I don't think that they keep up, and the steam does have to kick in.
Yeah.
To eat that barbeque. So, that's, that's the boiler that's in the worst shape. Um, the two other oil burners that heat the rest of the offices, the police department, are in better shape. Um, the, the one, the gas boiler there is, that one's, it's better off a lot. So.
So, maybe it takes a.
I just got fired up, and it was all clunks and clangs, and all sorts of stuff happening in the first, you know, week that I got it running, but it's, uh, that's probably a bigger priority, but then, yeah, do we figure out, okay, do we just get heat pumps to heat the annex as well, and maybe some more to, so the library can run on some of the floor just on heat pumps, I haven't gotten that far, we yet to see, but those are the thoughts and conversations that have to happen.
Yeah, do we want to spend a lot of money on putting these boilers in and stuff, and maybe five years down the road, looking at buying a whole new town building, if we get that grant, per se? I mean, it's kind of like a gamble here.
Uh, I, I think the gamble would be thinking that we're actually gonna get anybody to build something, you know?
Well, yeah, I mean, that's the next.
A, a new town hall would be, even as, especially a municipal building.
Right.
Public safety, future everything, kind of like what we have now, only, you know, would be tremendously expensive. And even if, you know, we're talking now, well, over twenty million, certainly, and even if the state paid for half of it, like they would, you know, M S B A or, or more, we're still talking a pretty heavy lift for the town, just having, you know, paid for a house, so, um, I think it's gonna be, I don't know, you know, looking at towns and funding, and the economy, and taxes, I don't know that the town's ever been able to afford another new building.
Yeah.
It's, it's, I have to be honest, looking at it, you know.
Not, not to put ten, fifteen, twenty million.
No, it's a town looked at by the bank to put the police station in or something.
The bank is, is not suitable, uh, the only base, the only bathroom's in the basement. It only has really two offices in the, in, in the, in the, in the top part, um, so it's not accessible.
Okay. You guess had enough experience living in that for the last number.
You could be resuscitated, though.
The bank is deteriorated.
Oh, is it?
You know, from, from a, from wanting to have a, a modern building that meets all requirements.
Or it could be a key.
I think we're looking at, um.
Say the foundation.
Making continued investments in the current town hall, upgrade the heating system, make it accessible, the elevator, it's gonna cost in the order of less than, much less than ten million.
Yeah.
Uh, less than two million, maybe, for, you know? But you look at that in the context of, um, a new town hall, like we're talking about, I mean, even if that's twenty years away, it's still worth doing these things to the current.
Yeah.
Town hall, even if it was ten years away, I'd say it's still worth doing these things.
And, you know, in terms of the, of the third floor, um, there was an idea kicking around a little bit, that, well, you know, so, so we did, um, you know, do the sort of structural changes that we would have had to do the second floor interior walls to make the third floor look there, but we could do it section by section over time, so that's, um, that's a possibility.
Yeah.
But, you know, but, yeah, I'm, uh.
And I agree with Dan, it's like, okay, we, we, and you, that we're not gonna get twenty million dollars to put in a new building anytime soon, a little down, you know, down the road. It's like, you know, back to the, you know, we want to make it accessible, so that goes back to the ADA committee, we want to make sure that it gets heated, and the environmental side of it, it's, it's structurally sound, and then the environment is, is in our favor from an economic perspective. And what does that kind of, your three to five-year strategy look like of the investments we need to make, right? And then you just kind of say that?
Let's identify that, yeah.
Because once you start with the investments, say we're gonna invest that first million, then it locks all the work to really get the value, if you're gonna put another two million in, right? So, the story is, hey, town, this particular vote on this particular town hall strategy is that your vote here is really pre-committing you for the next three years.
Yeah.
Of this expense, right? But we're not gonna expend it all now, but we would have to, you know, borrow, whatever the case might be, as the time goes, but it'd be less than five million. But, but putting that building strategy together would be interesting.
Yeah, so, um, again, these are all thoughts that we, you know, are kind of kicking around, but we don't, we don't have any, any specifics.
No, don't expect any right now, no, not at all. And it's go into the master plan, as far as that town or facilities, you know, underneath that section, or.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, so that, you know, in some ways, there's, you know, that sort of internal stuff, staffing and facilities, that a lot of people in town probably don't see the full benefit of, or they don't realize the full benefit of social promoting, what we're doing, I, and communicating that better is, is a great idea. Uh, the, the other one, and I, you know, I've been working with, with Dan on a possible skate park, and, uh, there are grants out there, the park grant, um, the state park grant does, uh, which is, stands for something, it's an acronym, uh, it has substantial money that, that has gone to towns, I think they've probably matched it, so we'll take a substantial. It has substantial money that, that has gone to towns, I think they've probably matched it, so we'll take a substantial match. But, um, you know, we're gonna be meeting with the open space and recreation community on Thursday night and talking with them and saying, "Well, we realize this may not be a priority of yours, but it is a recreation thing and there are people who are interested in doing it. So, um, with your, with your blessing, maybe we can work on this and, and, and communicate with you about what we're doing and so that you're on board and you can, you can say, oh, yeah, okay, that sounds good or please..." And that sort of thing, just so that, you know, we're not, we're not sort of trying to take over something from them, but, um, working with them on this particular priority. So, uh, just sort of update on that.
We've got a lot of interest in that town, especially a lot of the kids and, and skate parks are becoming also more an attraction for people outside of town.
It is.
So you get the economic factor too.
I'm aware, but I live in Pittsfield, I live really near, um, the skate, I think I have to call it a park, I think it's called Skate Common or something like that. But it's, it's, A, a really nice place and B, I mean, shows can be done and there's, there's ways to do it. So I was thinking maybe starting there, um, talking with people in Pittsfield, seeing how they got that done and then working my way through that. That's just kind of a starting point, but...
Tom's reached out to a bunch of towns as well and got a lot of information.
Yeah, yeah, I should've been sharing that with you all along anyway, but you, in this...
Sure, yeah, we'll get that.
Just a few thoughts, um, to wrap up, I think, you know, we exist in a context and we can do a certain amount by ourselves. There are some factors that are really, um, that we have to struggle with that are not our own fault, our own problem. There are, you know, regional and even local factors. I sent, um, this, uh, this really excellent PowerPoint from the Donovan Institute, which is a, is a great snapshot of the economy of Berkshire County, um, showing what the demographics are, you know, showing that, um, you know, showing some unemployment, you know, figures and sort of, you know, this, this is the environment that we, that we're working in. Nobody has enough housing stock, it's not affordable anywhere. This is where, you know, we might do some good with funding that gap between people's needs to rehabilitate their home and what the community development law and... Not that, and there's a waiting list for the community development law too, it's not like they're funding everybody who, who applies. You know, looking at the grain of the population, we need aging and quits, maybe ADUs are a part of that. I think there's definitely a step in the right direction. Maybe we need more zoning reform, but housing is, is just huge. People can't move here, they can't afford to live here, they can't, you know, start young and then grow here and really...
Does this, does this research begin to inform us possibly of what to actually do out here? Rather than individual lots, it's now smaller homes where some of our older adults may sell off their main property and want to buy a smaller home here. So you might rather put seven units, you get fourteen, right? And now you have more housing stock for younger families moving in town that buy these homes. And those older adults now have a pretty good source of, of financials because they just sold the house for four hundred, five hundred thousand. Because the market's gone up significantly.
Well, and, and I'll, I'll just, I'll just give a, a little bit of a, maybe a different perspective on that. That, that would be an opportunity also to have a community land trust where housing is permanently affordable. And, and where, where housing those do go up and people do get, um, some of that if they, if they sell, but there's a cap.
Yeah.
So that, so that it's as permanently protected housing as it's supposed to permanently protect the land. And the town or some nonprofit entity, DRA, the DRA, to do it, the Development Authority, were owning the land and people were owning the houses. It sucked and that, that cuts down on, it wouldn't help the cap space suspension, but it would serve a, a public need. So I think there might be creative ways of, of addressing it and, and having people be able to stay in town. Here are people who I can't afford to live here anymore. Massachusetts is a place that's getting really hard to afford to live in, so...
And what?
You know, there's a lot of pluses, unbelievable. There's, there's a lot of great employment in, in, um, small manufacturing, um, obviously agriculture.
Yeah.
There's a, there's a lot of agricultural stuff going on, there, there, it's a pretty vibrant economy still.
Yeah.
But, so there's lots of places to fit in, um, all, all the medical stuff.
Yeah, it's, it's not, it's not affordable living out here for the new, new nurse, the new teacher or some of the social service aspects.
Exactly, that's what I wanna say is, like, when I was looking out here and, like, actually I think my girlfriend would like, would like to buy property out here. And just looking at, you know, when Dalton is advertised in the videos, you know, great place to raise a family, you know, come move to Dalton. And, you know, your idea is really good with there, but like you wanna create an affordable housing stock for people to move into. Because you're saying, come move here, we don't have the housing for that, so you know, you're... And then at the same time, residents who lived here a long time are also getting priced out. So having, like Tom said, there's still an economy here, there's people who love, they think it's beautiful out here. When I take people to visit, they're like, oh, I wish I could live out here. And it's like, you can't, you know, you just need to find the work and the housing. And there clearly is work, there's, you know, still an economy going on here, but the housing is all, you know, has been an issue for, I don't know how long and it's in it. Doesn't seem to be getting better. And I think that's when people are looking for jobs, especially coming out of high school or coming out of grad school, like a lot of them were, admittedly me too, I was looking in Eastern Mass. The cost of living is just skyrocketing out there, but there was some housing stock. I was lucky enough to, you know, found a position here and find good, you know, it's good wages and I was able to find a good place to live. But I know that that's not, I know, I'm not the rule, I'm the exception with that. So if people are frequently looking west of, I'm sorry, east of the Connecticut River rather than west of it for their, um, after college employment because of, exactly that, yeah. Or they go out of state, you know, if they're from New York, New Jersey or wherever, but for Massachusetts residents, it's frequently towards Boston, not towards Berkshire.
Yeah. It's an interesting conundrum, but opportunity, right? We got the space out here, maybe we just... Opportunity to think through it.
I think my, my, um, my perspective now is we do have the ability to do some stuff now.
Yeah.
That if current trends continue, we might not in another five or ten years. So we actually have the chance now to think through strategically where we do wanna put some of our resources, how we do wanna shape, um, some of the community to come. And, and that, that will, that will get less over time is what I'm seeing. I'm seeing, um, the, the market forces, you know, uh, drywall prices change and nature of work, uh, we can take advantage of some of that, you know? And regionally, it would be great to have train service in Pittsfield, possibly, Pittsfield, Missouri.
Yeah.
Maybe that's gonna happen. It, it's looking a lot more likely than it did three years ago.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, but those are all things that, you know, we don't, we don't necessarily have control over. We need to pay attention to the manhattan cake for it, um, at the state level.
I'll listen to the, uh, video I saw the other day about drones and drone delivery. So drone delivery is like medication delivery by drone, Walmart, CVS is doing that.
Okay.
All I pictured were recharging stations, because these drones need to recharge somewhere. Recharging on top of municipal buildings and charging them for their service of, of that electricity recharge and then they can continue back to their home base, whatever they come out here to drop on.
Why not?
Opportunity to kind of do things like that too, right? You gotta think different, right?
Your towns are wasted. Get yourself a better town.
That's, yeah, I'm trying.
You could add a nationwide network.
I just...
Yeah, amazing.
That's right, exactly, just kind of put it all together. This, Tom, I think you just summed up tonight really, really well. It's like, we don't know what's gonna, we know what was coming at us, but it's like the opportune time to set the strategy, to kind of think through it differently. With, especially with the talent we have in the, in the town, you know, Bud, Jeff...
Yanko.
Yanko. I get it right.
You can hit him.
Tom.
Tom, yeah, and, you know, everyone else, it's just, it's the right, you, you, you joined at the right time, you know? I think you guys all did, so...
Deanna?
Deanna, yeah, we got a, a great crew of people.
Yeah.
And it's a matter of, look at the list in front of us. We could sit here and go, we don't know, or we could just step back and reflect a little bit. I think you summed up exactly right, so, yeah. You wanna hit on anything else or?
Uh, no.
What, uh, what do you think?
I think we hit our limit.
Hmm? You think we hit our limit?
Fifty-five.
Oh, yeah, we got it right on time. Did you find tonight helpful?
Very much.
Dan, what do you think?
Oh, yeah, I made a lot of notes, um, in various areas in the master plan. Things that I think that we're already planning or, or continued work, but then some other new things. You know, the idea of attracting, you know, for economic development, uh, we've got licenses available, uh, for cannabis. Why wouldn't we wanna attract people to come and do business here, uh, in that industry? It's, it's illegal, uh, it's a legal, uh, you know, business use, um, and we've zoned for it. So there's no reason to discourage it or be quiet about it really. You know, I like that idea of, you know, more marketing of our economic assets, um, so I think that could really help. Bring in some new tax revenue, um, as well as visitors and people to...
Do we have a map of, uh, available business opportunity or places for business to come in?
We talked about, um, engaging with the, um, Dalton redevelopment committee, um, to talk about, you know, creating that...
Commercial property and different inventory. It's what we got available, how many square feet, what kind of buildings there, what...
What it's zoned for, all that, yeah.
What it's zoned for, if we could have that, that'd be huge.
That's, yeah, it's a little side project, I'm gonna...
I mean, we are...
The Dalton Business Support Board.
Called that?
In terms of...
TM.
In terms of new construction. We're very, we're quite limited, um, by our geographical constraints as well as our zoning and our preservation of open space and farmland. So there's not a, a ton that we're gonna be able to do in terms of new development in Dalton, it's been this way for a while.
It's built up.
If you look at somewhere, um, that has a main state highway stretch, um, that has a lot of development, look at Great Barrington, you come down Route seven.
Oh, my God, yes.
All, it's developed, right? We don't have that, um, I'm not saying we need that, but we're talking about ways to reduce the tax burden, grow the town, provide for housing. We can't have our cake and eat it too, meaning if we don't change our zoning, we'll never really be able to grow, to adapt. Um, we'll probably just keep falling behind.
Yeah.
Um, but I also don't wanna propose that, you know, we alter the character of town too much either. I, I really value where we live and why I live here.
One thing we really need is a halfway hotel, a big, bigger hotel. I mean, we got these big soccer tournaments coming up this weekend, people are staying out of the area.
That's true. Look at Hadley, Route nine and Hadley.
Exactly, oh my God, they only need, they only need graduation weekend.
Basically, yeah, it's heavily trafficked. Much more so than anywhere in Dalton for sure, but you just look at how they develop their economy and their tax base. Dalton depended on Crane Company as a mill town for so many years and still does to some extent, but it's not the center necessarily of everything that's happening anymore. Because the population way outgrew what Crane Company could employ, first of all.
Plus they only got one product now compared to many.
And their business has scaled down too. Um, so I'm just thinking about these things and it ties in with our zoning, um, so I made, like I said, I've made a lot of notes, um, we're talking about housing. You know, we may wanna look at our short-term rental zoning, I know Great Barrington certainly did. You know, I'm not a huge fan of over, you know, overly intrusive government and controls on markets, but at the same time, maybe we're losing out on opportunity to more affordably house people because this housing stock's being used, uh, for short-term rental and, and, you know, basically corporate profits, Airbnb, right?
Yeah.
I know that that helps up, create an income stream for some people, um, we don't wanna necessarily limit that, but maybe we need to look at that. Our multifamily zoning, there's only certain places that it's allowed and I don't think any new multifamily zoning is by rights, it's by permit only. So more multifamily units will create more housing.
Yes.
You know, one, one typical development strategy wouldn't, wouldn't really work that well in Dalton, which is, which is infill.
Yep.
You know, because you look at the houses around here, they're, they're pretty densely developed.
Yeah.
These are small lots.
Oh, yeah.
You can't really pack more people in here. I think when you have to start with the business center that we have, you know, and then grow that out. That, that's, that's what I would focus on, so that, so that people are already going there, so now they'll go a number block away to do something. So looking at those properties and, um, making it easier for them to redevelop, I think would be one, one of the needs to do.
Yeah, the redevelopment of existing properties. But our current zoning laws certainly restrict what can happen in those areas. And if we were to relax those a little bit, we would encourage more investment. People don't wanna invest if they can't make a return. And if the zoning restricts the activity, then it's gonna restrict the return.
Well, the watered bank for the first floor and the fourth floor building.
Well, that's the thing, we've got a height restriction, you know, so this is, this is a big conversation.
Right next door, there's another, there's another building like that, pretty soon you have kind of the city wall. You've got the, the place where, you know...
It'd be really interesting, maybe I just don't know all the zoning laws or, you know, specifically, but it'd be interesting to say, okay, let's look at the strategies and what zoning needs to change to support that strategy, what's the barrier in that particular strategy? And then we kind of look at that and you go, do we wanna make that better? Do we wanna make that adjustment or not? What's the, what's the research, research showing us? But the dance point is like, okay, how do we kind of massage this?
Yeah, it's funny, one of the previous towns I worked in, people didn't want a, a better nap pad. So, no, that's okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just, just leave it, it's okay.
And that's a decision point, right?
And that's where, that's where town meeting comes in, people can vote on by law changes. It's not any one person who can make these decisions.
Right, right.
But one person can propose ideas and build...
But the vision will be there, yeah.
Imagine what would've happened if these eight votes had swung the, the other way.
We'd have a horrible housing complex there built, the old Dalton High School.
But there was a decision.
And we would've met a very pressing need for more housing in town.
They had the ball, one point two million dollars.
And then just finally, you know, obviously we've got our infrastructure priorities. I think it's pretty clear, without doing a ton of, um, uh, research and studying, that a new municipal building is kind of way off in some distant future, but we're gonna have to do the best with what we have now and invest in those buildings. We're gonna have to make the investments in town hall, in our highway facilities, um, police station, I don't know, maybe there's a new place, um, we could put the police station. I know you said the bank's not really a usable building so much as if it's a teardown situation, but maybe there's an opportunity to build something there.
And then keeping our, keeping our eye on the fire district of what the needs are there, so those buildings cross into...
Yeah, that plays into it as well, right? And then open space and recreation, North Mountain Park, we, I really wanna figure out how we can move forward with getting that operational in some way for, uh, whether it's playing fields, hiking, whatever, something.
Access is a big problem with that because of just the rate of, of...
It's like, now that we have that, it's like, what's the cost to get all that done, right? Is that gonna be like a, you know, you, you hit the nail on the head, it's like, okay, here's our plan, we've got all the great steps, but what's the cost to it, right? And if this thing's a half a million dollars versus this thing's a hundred thousand dollars, where do we, where do we make those bets?
And it's not even cost necessarily. And it's not even cost necessarily, it's just money, I mean, like I said, money, time, people, like personnel, man hours, all, all that.
And then continued maintenance.
Exactly, and, yep, you're right, yep.
So there's an ongoing cost to the town when we...
Yeah.
Expand and do these new things, I'd love to see a skate park, but, you know, that's an upfront cost and an ongoing cost.
We got a big opportunity, yeah, we got a big opportunity with, on Dalton American Legion, we could make a deal for playing fields with them.
Yeah.
I mean, there's our answer to playing fields right there in the Dalton Legion.
Yeah.
You know...
Lease the space from them?
Lease the space from them or make a, I don't know.
Make a purchase price?
Make a purchase with them, I don't know, but...
It's not a bad idea, Bob, not a bad idea at all.
I mean, that's all developed, I mean, when I was a kid, we played football there all the time.
So, lots to consider, and I know that, uh, this conversation tonight and, um, the great analysis that you did on the master plan, Yanko, is going to play into our future conversations, uh, for how we'll be planning.
Yeah.
Um, the priorities and how we're going to be spending taxpayer money, um, of course, as sustainable and incrementalist as we can.
In, in government structure in town, it was select, but with the plan of boil, uh, separate elected officials that kind of set the, and they worked very closely with you and, and, you know, town manager, at some point, should we boil this down and have a joint meeting at some point? Would that be good between like now and January, February, as we then get into town meeting and just three months?
I'll, I'll reach out to Andy, I personally, I think it would be a good idea, um, that I'd obviously...
Dan, I'd be happy to be part of that as chair vice chair too.
Yeah, I believe that, yeah, that'd be, that'd be really helpful, beneficial, yeah.
Maybe sooner rather than, than later.
Yeah.
Before the end of the calendar year maybe.
Where the song, we all forget this.
Yeah.
Just keep it all fresh, no, I agree.
It's October now, maybe early December, couple months.
Yeah, a couple months, so, yeah.
I'll bring it up to the board.
Okay, all right, but thank you.
You're very welcome.
Tom, thank you for all the effort.
Of course.
And, uh, Yanko, thank you. Hey, guys, thanks for hanging in on us.
Thank you.
It was helpful.
Good stuff, um...
We didn't talk about ARPA tonight, I know we have some funds left over.
Yeah, that's going to be on the agenda next.
But it's going to come up on, on the ninth, I believe.
Yeah.
Unless you wanted to talk about it real quick now.
We're waiting for some information to come in.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah, I'm so sorry, I didn't even catch our secretary's name.
Jen.
Jen, Jen, what's your last name?
Richard.
Nice to see you, thank you for being here.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, I'm so over not asking at the beginning going, there's someone new over there taking notes tonight.
She's the town administrator in Saboy, sort of.
Oh, really? Oh, okay, great, when did you join us?
I think it's been about a year.
Boy, where have I been?
Well, I think I've done one slash meeting, but...
Oh, it's probably absent that day, yeah, that's my excuse. Okay, well, thank you, everybody, and thank you to our folks from Dalton Community TV for hanging in there and our...
Thank you.
I, Burke's reporter, thank you, Sabrina.